Well, good afternoon. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. And I'd like to ask our clerk to call the roll. Trustee Cottle, will you please?
All right, President Raymond.
Here.
Vice President Taylor.
I'm here.
All right, Andrew Cottle, I'm here. Trustee Calvert.
Here.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Here.
Trustee Kelly. Was here. We'll put a pin in that. Trustee Kelly is somewhere. Trustee Minneto.
Here.
Student Representative Noble.
Here.
All right, Madam President, we have a quorum.
Great. We will now move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please rise, and I will kick us off here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the next item on the agenda is an action to adopt the agenda. I will just take a moment to remind our members of the public that might be viewing this, that you may submit your comments throughout the meeting to the email address J. Batchelder, And the comments will be forwarded on to the board and included as part of the meeting materials and minutes. These comments will not be read aloud during the meeting, but we will read the names of those who submitted comments. And as we move on to our adopting the agenda, I would like to also make note that our staff has requested to pull Agenda Item 2.03, which is Preliminary Approval of Board's Policy 1160. So that will be pulled from the agenda and will return for consideration at a future meeting. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Simon Holland, seconded by Vice President Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, I think I'll do a roll call vote. So if you're on mute when I call your name, please unmute. So I'll just go across my screen. Trustee Minneto.
Aye.
Trustee Calvert.
Aye.
Vice President Taylor.
Aye.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Aye.
Trustee Cottle.
Aye.
And do we have trustee Kelly with us? I don't see him. Okay. All right, before we move on to the next agenda item, I would like to just take a moment to, first of all, thank everyone for their patience as we try out this new virtual meeting, first for our district, to my knowledge, for Board of Trustees meeting. We're all becoming very familiar with Zoom, but please, you know, understand that there may be some technical glitches as we move forward through the meeting. I'd also like to just take a moment to recognize many people. So give me a second here. I'll start with our interim superintendent, Dr. Kristin McNeil, and the entire board leadership team for their tireless, tireless work these past few weeks. The amount of time and energy they have put into just keeping things going day to day has been an incredible, incredible lift for them all. And I know we have, as a board, felt in very safe hands throughout this process. I'd also like to thank all of the members of the district that are serving on the COVID-19 task force. They have really been the ones behind the scenes doing all the work and making sure that we not only are feeding our students, that we're, you know, getting our distance learning plan together and, and again, just keeping things running. And another shout out to our bus drivers and our nutrition services department for actually getting those packets out there and for feeding our students. This has been a huge, huge effort on the part of everyone. And again, just could not be more proud of our district. And really, that includes everyone. That includes our principals and our teachers who are busy today and yesterday, getting everything together so that our kids can start work tomorrow, learning, and, and really just everyone at the district that's been involved with this. And just one last shout out to all of the first responders, the frontline people out there in the community, our nurses, our doctors, the grocery store workers, and the food services people. This has just been, you know, a completely uncharted waters for us. And I just really, you know, want everyone in the community to know how much we appreciate you at the school district. And a reminder just to our students and our families to please be safe out there. You know, I know it's, we're all getting on close to two-plus weeks of being homebound, and that gets challenging. But, you know, this isn't a time to be out trying to, you know, have playdates. It's not a time for, for going shopping as a family. This is really a time to just think about coming together as a community and, and please, just when you can, stay home and wash your hands. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I will first ask trustees if they have any consent agenda items that they would like to pull from the agenda today. All right, seeing some shaking heads. We have received public comment for the last few days, and throughout that time, we've been, as trustees, I know, reading those comments. I have not seen any specific to the consent agenda, but JJ Batchelder, do you have any names that should be read as public comment for the consent agenda?
Not for this item.
All right, thank you. Then I'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Motion by Vice President Taylor, seconded by trustee Simon Holland. And I will do a roll call for the vote. So all those in favor, trustee Minneto.
Aye.
Trustee Calvert.
Aye.
Vice President Taylor.
Aye.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Aye.
Trustee Cottle.
Aye.
And I see, I think Scott has joined us. Trustee Kelly.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
And Madam President?
Yes.
Just, just clarifying that that, that was a motion to approve without 2.03.
Oh, yes. Thank you for pointing that out. Yes. All right, the next item on the agenda is our public comment period. I will just note again that we are accepting public comment today throughout the board meeting. Those comments can be emailed to the address J.B.A.T.C.H.E.L.D.E.R@washoschools.net. We will post those comments as soon as we receive them. The ones that we've received already have been posted on our board docs, which you can find through the district website. And so at this time, we will read off the names of those that have sent in comments. If you do not hear your name called during this item, but received confirmation of your comments, then staff may have determined that the comments should be actually connected to a specific agenda item later on in the agenda. The names you'll hear now are just general public comments that were received and submitted prior to, right now, and this item being called. These comments have all been forwarded to us, the members of the Board of Trustees, as I mentioned, and we have all read these comments. So I will now ask our recording secretary to read the names. JJ?
We received comments from Tanya Coleman, Coraline Dubois, Jesse Campbell, Kalen Evans, Peggy Rue, Christopher Case, Kelly Case, Tierney Cahill, Karen Swoe, Julina Colt, and Katie Furman.
All right, thank you for that. And we have not received any comments since we began the meeting. And so we will just now then move on to the next agenda item. All right, coming up next, we have Agenda Item 4.01, which is Presentation by Staff and Discussion by the Board Regarding the District's Fiscal Year 2020/21 Tentative Budget for All District Funds, Budget Uncertainties, Recommended Next Steps for the Budget, Consideration of Possible Direction to the Interim Superintendent and Staff, and Approval of the Fiscal Year 2020/21 Tentative Budget. This is for discussion and possible action. I will make my reminder one more time that you can email any comments related to this agenda item throughout the presentation. This presentation may take anywhere from, I believe, 30 to 45 minutes. And so as you're hearing the presentation, please feel free to email J.B.A.T.C.H.E.L.D.E.R@washoschools.net. We will, as a board, be receiving those emails while we're in the meeting. And we will take a moment to read any comments we receive during, after the presentation. We will again not read those comments aloud, but we will read them individually. And then we will read off the names of anyone that submits public comment for this item at the end of the presentation. All right, our presenters today are Mr. Mark Mathers, our Chief Financial Officer, and Mr. Mike Schrader, Budget Director. They will be sharing the presentation on the screen, so you will be able to follow along. And I'll let them kick us off.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Trustee, slump me, as you said, share the presentation. Okay, and as you noted, Mike will be joining me virtually for today. Let me set the agenda, if I can get this going. There we go. Well, first, I'd an update, item number one, between our revenue and expense projections that we gave you February 25th into today. So we'll bring you up to date on the current tentative budget. As you know, it's required to be submitted to the state by April 15th of each year. So Mike will cover that. And then on, number two, I will talk about various budget uncertainties we face for fiscal year '21, next fiscal year. I'm warning you, this will be the worst part of your day. But we will go through it. And we do have a plan to manage through those uncertainties into fiscal year '21. So we'll kind of cover that in this item. Item number three will cover questions that we had from the board at the last budget work session in February. We'll see those figures and facts based on your requests. And then in item number four, Mike will cover next steps that we will need to take to get to a final budget. And that is slated for approval by the board or considered by the board in late May. And we are required by state law to submit a final budget to the state by June 8th. And then if we have time, we have various schedules for the general fund in item five and other funds in item six that we can go through, again, if time allows, and based on, you know, the president and the trustees' direction. So with that, I will turn it over to Mike, who hopefully can, we can coordinate here on the slide progression. But Mike, take it away.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, President Raymond, interim superintendent McNeil, members of the board. As Mark said, we're here to update you on where we left off from what we call a preliminary budget to our tentative budget. By law, we have to file a tentative budget by April 15th of the year. Doesn't have to be approved by the board, but our policy suggests that the board prove it and see it. So if you recall, we met a long time ago, September and November, and we started out, we were looking, based on early projections, that roughly over a $4 million deficit. We updated that for you in February, on February 25th. And based on a number of factors, we're able to revise our salary projections. We have much better information about revenues. We met with departments, done a budget survey, did a lot of steps in between. And at that point in time, we were sitting at about a budget deficit of $750,000. So what this slide does is kind of take you through what changes are being made since that point in time. The top portion of the slide in blue indicates the revenue changes that we're proposing, and the orangish section are the expenditures. When you look at the total, revenue changes of $7.74 million. A lot of that is really related to textbooks. I'm going to explain that in a second. And down on the expenditures, the total expense is $6.99 million more. Once again, a lot of that is textbooks of $6.17 million. At the February 25th meeting, it was expressed that we really wanted to try to get these textbooks for science adopted as soon as possible. What this budget does is allow for that. We're proposing to do a medium-term financing over two, over a two-year period, basically to pay off the textbooks. And essentially, that money is coming from the existing budget that we already have for textbooks in this year's budget and next year's budget. So we have to make the budget match up to the accounting world. So these first two entries, the first line item for medium-term financing, and the first line item on the expenditures for the textbooks, is really an accounting adjustment. We have to show that we received $6 million in revenue, medium-term financing. And then we took that $6 million and bought textbooks. So the net impact to the overall budget is really a zero net change from where we were before. It's kind of an accounting thing. But what it allows us to do is adopt the textbooks in fiscal year '21. The adoption process takes a little while. There's a committee that meets, vendors come in, show us their products. There's a selection process. Ultimately, whatever we select has to be approved by the State Board of Education. At that point in time, we can begin to purchase the textbooks. This would allow us to purchase.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I believe trustee Simon Holland has a question. I apologize for interrupting.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Raymond, and thank you, Mike. I just wanted to thank you for finding a way to do the science textbooks. I know this is a really tough, very heavy lift. And, and I just am very grateful. I know you all worked hard to be able to make this happen. So I just wanted to say thank you and thanks for all of the work to bring in a balanced budget.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you for the comments. So as I was explaining, the adoption process basically takes fiscal year '21 to complete. At the end of the approval by the State Board of Education, we would be able to purchase the textbooks, hopefully have them delivered prior to the end of fiscal year '21. Then they would be available in advance for the implementation of the K5 science adoption in fiscal year '22. Moving on down on the revenue portion up there in the blue, the second and third line, once again, these are just offsets. They have no impact to the overall budget. The state provides us updated local school support tax numbers, the Department of Taxation does. And whatever change there is just an offset to what the state, through the distributive school account or the DSA, would have to pay. So one might go down, the other one goes up. If sales tax goes up, then the DSA portion goes down. So once again, just a line item thing. It has no impact on the overall budget. So what are we really changing that impacts the overall budget? Would be the fourth line and the fifth line, which are property tax and charter school. So the property tax adjustment, when we were in February, we had estimated about a 5% increase to property tax over the prior fiscal year. We now have the finalized Department of Taxation, what they call their pro forma, which kind of sets in stone what they really believe we will collect in property taxes for the upcoming fiscal year. And that actually came in at about 6.81% increase. So that increases our budget by 1.3 million. The charter school impact was just kind of revising our estimates for growth in charter schools, provided us a little bit of money there. So when you take the total revenue, $7.74 million minus the textbook portion, what's left over is that 1.57 million, which is really the property tax and the charter school impact. So what do we intend to do? How do we want to apply those funds towards our expenditure? I'll go down to the expenditure, the orange area. As I mentioned in the first line, it's just purchasing the textbooks. But now we have to pay for the first year of the textbooks. And though this was money that was previously budgeted to buy textbooks, but the actual purchase is coming out of our debt service fund because that's where we pay our debt. So we're taking those funds, we just have to transfer it to the debt service fund. So the debt service fund can make that payment. Once again, it's really an internal transfer. It has no impact on the overall budget. So what does have the impact? The last four line items. We have lease costs across the district. Typically, those increment each year based on a predetermined contract. We have to provide for that. That's about $200,000. On our class size reduction fund, we were able to look at our revenue there. And we have a little bit more revenue there than we anticipated, which that really helps us offset some costs for the general. So that's a reduction of an expense. Now, property insurance, we have, we're self-insured for property casualty claims. Have you seen the last couple board items over the last couple years for our premiums for that insurance? They've gone up eight to 10% each year. And we have not increased our amount of funding towards our property insurance fund for about six years, actually. So we're at that point in time where, okay, we gotta, we gotta look at this and start funding it so we can cover those increases. That's about another $400,000. If you recall, the earlier parts in the preliminary budget, it already increases by $750,000. So this is another $400,000 on top of that. So about a $1.15 million increase. So when you take those expenditure increases and consider the 1.57 million in the revenue increase, and we've got a little bit left over. First of all, we're saying, well, we had a $750,000 deficit. We can offset that with these revenue increases. And that leaves about $510,000 left over. And at this point in time, we were just proposing to put that into the contingency account. As Mark will express here in the next couple slides, there are a lot of, a lot of uncertainties out there, just like with our schooling. You know, we're doing distance learning. There's uncertainty. It's really a fluid situation. Same thing on this side. It's, there's a lot of uncertainty, and it's really fluid, really fluid situation. So right now, this $510,000 makes our contingency account only 1.4 million. By law, you could have a contingency of up to 3 million or up to 3%, but that would be $15 million. So 1.4 million is not quite 3%, but at least it's something. So based on that, using these new revenues, we're essentially able to balance the budget, which is a very good thing. As you can see from this slide, fiscal year '20 was the first year we had a balanced budget in a long, long time. So this would be based on what we're proposing, the second year in a row that we have a balanced budget. And what we mean by that is when our expenditures are at least less than or equal to our revenues. So for fiscal year '21, revenues are 502.8 million. The expenditures, amazingly, are 502.8 million, and we have a balanced budget. So before we start doing cartwheels again, Mark wants to bring us back down to earth. And he's got some news that if you looked at this stuff two and a half weeks ago, you'd be very happy that we have a balanced budget. But a lot can happen in two and a half weeks. And there's a number of issues out there that Mark is going to explain.
Great. Thank you.
Mark, I do see that trustee Cottle would like to ask a question or make a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. Question for adjusted budget. And if I'm getting ahead of you, let me know. Our current events are what, putting a deficit there for adjusted budget fiscal year '20?
That's a good question. I'm sorry I didn't address that. If you see in the adjusted budget, the top line opening fund balance is $41.7 million. Included in that number are some assignments for things that happened in the prior fiscal year, we kind of carry over into this fiscal year. So if we have an open purchase order, we committed last year's funds to pay for something. We just didn't get those goods or services delivered by June 30th. So between those purchase orders, what we call encumbrances, some carryover funds for schools of about $200,000. That's what that 3 million is for. And it's the opening fund balance that is providing the resource to pay for that.
I remember us having conversations about something last summer where Dr. McNeil was working with Department of Ed, that we didn't, something didn't arrive in time. And I don't remember. I'm trying to remember the conversation, if this is related, if this is what you're talking about.
I think you're referring to the prior fiscal year about our textbooks that we had purchased, but they didn't actually come in until this year. So.
Okay.
That was a different topic.
Yeah. Do any other trustees have questions right now, or should Mark continue on? All right, I'm not hearing from anybody or seeing any hands raised on the Zoom app, so we'll keep moving. Oh, sorry, Vice President Taylor.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, let's go back here. Mike, thank you for the explanation. Trustee Cottle, I was thinking the same thing. I still don't quite understand why that shows there's a deficit. Can you go through that one more time, please?
Sure. This was basically when we came in December. It's why we call her December Augmented Budget. By law, we have to adjust our budget to what our enrollment is. We have to do that by January 1st. So if you see on the revenues, we had $488.3 million in the final budget. And the adjusted budget is $488.7 million. So we adjusted for that. And you see on that top line opening fund balance, it increased by a little over $5 million from the final budget.
Yes.
But part of that increase was, it was a savings from the prior year, fiscal year '19. But it also was related to some expenditures that didn't happen because we didn't receive goods and products by June 30th. And that portion of those expenditures was the 3 million below. So even though we had 5 million excess, 3 million of that really had to go to pay for things that we had already committed to. And the other 2 million goes into the ending fund balance. It increases that by a little over 2 million.
I got it. I got it now. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, assuming then no other questions, I will talk about some of the uncertainties we face headed into fiscal year '21. And, you know, every year, we kind of go into it not knowing some things, but fiscal year '21 takes the cake as far as I can ever remember in terms of, you know, very significant unknowns that face the district going into next fiscal year. And we'll talk about those here in this section. And we'll talk about a strategy for how to manage through those unknowns headed into fiscal year '21. for how to manage through those unknowns headed into fiscal year 21. So the first unknown we face has to do with a court order in October that ruled in favor of property owners in Incline Village against Washoe County. And that order basically compels the county to refund property taxes that were collected more than 15 years ago by the county treasurer. So this order came out in October. Since then, we have attempted to gather the figure for our own liability, our share of the liability. So this affects a number of taxing entities, primarily Washoe County, Washoe County School District, Incline Village GID, and the Northlake Tahoe Fire Protection District. So earlier this month, we've, we did get a number verbally from the county and that number is a total of 19 million. So that represents our total liability as part of this district order to refund property taxes that were overcollected by the county. That 19 million includes both the principal amount of those property taxes that are due back to property owners in Incline Village, but, and also the legal interest that has accrued over those 15 years. So you can see a breakdown of that 19 million dollars. You'll remember that part of the property taxes we receive at the school district is for our debt service for rollover bonds. And so of the 19 million, 6.5 million is related to that debt rate that we collect and that would be owed by our debt service funds. Then the remainder, 12.5 million relates back to the general fund. And as you all know, the state basically receives 1/3 of our property taxes that goes as a credit against the distributive school account and the state share of K through 12 funding. So based on that, 4.2 million of the 12.5 million dollar general fund share would be owed by the state, which leaves 8.3 million as our share within the general fund of that 19 million dollar liability. As shown on the screen, we understand the county has been engaged in settlement talks with the plaintiff's attorney. We do not know where those settlement talks stand. We've heard that there may be a resolution soon on those settlement talks. But again, that was before the kind of coronavirus came, came up as a big issue. So we're not entirely sure how this will be resolved. The county did vote to appeal the decision in October. So if there is no settlement, presumably the appeal would move forward. And that takes usually several years to, to get to the Nevada Supreme Court and to be heard by the Supreme Court. If there is a settlement, it is very likely that the refunds would be processed over at least several years. Again, we don't know the parameters of the settlement discussions, but back in 2010, 2011, when there was another similar property tax lawsuit filed by Incline Village property owners, it did take the county several years to process all the refunds. So likely this is a multi-year impact, which does help phase the impact over time. Any questions? Okay. The next significant unknown that we face is something we talked about back in February. There are, like any year, kind of an unknown enrollment impact in fiscal year 21. That's even a bigger unknown because as we talked about in February, there is a new charter school that is under construction, at least last time we checked, in the Spanish Springs area. The proposed enrollment for that school is approximately 650 students. So we've calculated the impact of, of that here. If all of those charter school students came from Washoe County School District, there'd be a revenue impact of 4.9 million dollars. And then we've calculated the cost savings, if you will, of the associated reduced teacher allocations that result from a loss of 650 students. And so there'd be a net fiscal impact of a little under 3 million. However, you know, we do see growth in Washoe County, of course. We would expect to see enrollment numbers increase due to that new development. And as we talked about previously, there was a virtual school in Nevada Connections Academy that was ordered closed by the state public charter school authority. And so there may be Washoe County students enrolled in the Connections Academy that may return to Washoe County School District. So you will remember that we assumed all of this would net off in terms of a net enrollment change of zero. And that's still our assumption. We've been through this before and we feel comfortable with that baseline kind of assumption. But I did want to share these numbers, which really reflect kind of a worst case scenario. This, these numbers reflect the fact that we would lose a total of 650 students and there would be no increase in enrollment from other areas. So that's the second biggest, big unknown we face headed into fiscal year 21. The next big unknown is something we're all very familiar with by this point. And that is fiscal impacts related to the current COVID-19 pandemic. There are so many unknowns to this current situation that I kind of feel silly putting any numbers on the screen. We are at the front edge of our response as a community to COVID-19 and the state, it's the front edge, the front edge of their response. And so there really are just huge unknowns associated with the current pandemic. But you can see here on the screen, the cost to do a deep cleaning, the fact that we have not reopened schools helps us in the sense that, you know, we haven't incurred any cost to do a deep cleaning. We are doing standard cleaning processes to, to clean our schools while students are out. So that has begun and so we have incurred those costs. Certainly in terms of our operating costs, we have clamped down on expenses. Certainly we'll see far less costs for travel and training this year. And most positions have been froze, frozen. A significant cost however, that we're incurring today is related to the printing cost of our distance learning program that we implemented this week. So far, hot off the press, no pun intended, our cost to print those materials is totaled 72,000. And that's just for two weeks worth of materials. So if the distance learning program continues past the next several weeks, we'll continue to incur costs. We have seen our printing machines go down more frequently. So we're incurring maintenance costs, repair costs. We've outsourced some of our printing to the state and to UNR, and we may need to procure extra printers and that's something we're working on today. So I can't tell you the total estimated cost for this, but it is, it is significant. Another impact will be to our Nutrition Services Enterprise Fund. As you know, based on the governor's direction, we are paying staff, full-time staff in all of our areas, we continue to pay them salaries and benefits. But for the enterprise fund, we're not receiving that federal reimbursement for meals served, at least not to the degree that we were when schools were open. So we expect to see most likely a seven-figure loss for the enterprise fund based on how many meals they're serving and based on lower reimbursement rates. However, the, you know, the, the bright spot here is that Congress and the president have taken action to provide relief. The first two stimulus bills that were passed by Congress really were focused on medical programs and R and D and relief for individuals. But the third stimulus bill, the CARES Act, and I've gotten the, the bill number wrong here, but it's known as the CARES Act, has provided, and that's been signed, has provided 13.5 billion to K through 12. That's been signed, sealed and delivered. We wait for those monies to flow through the state and for the state to provide direction. But at least preliminarily, we estimate possibly 10 to 12 million coming to Washoe County School District from the CARES Act. So that will help a lot, obviously, with the increased costs that we will incur. But of course, all of this depends on the depth and duration of the pandemic and then the associated possible recession we're in. And, and so, so much of this is unknown. Again, I kind of feel a little silly trying to quantify some of the impacts here. But if we turn from our direct costs that we incur to respond to the COVID pandemic and now turn to kind of possible recession impacts, in our biggest assumption for the fiscal year 20 budget and the remainder of our fiscal year 20, but 20 budget, I should say, and into fiscal year 21, is that our enrollment will hold up and that the per pupil basic support guarantee provided by the state remains at those statutorily set levels. And so again, we're receiving $6,034 per student this fiscal year in $6,084 in fiscal year 21. The way the Nevada plan works, as Mike explained, is certainly we expect to see decreased sales taxes right now headed into possibly fiscal year 21. But the state, based on the Nevada plan and that basic support guarantee, should offset that loss.
Mark, Katie would like to ask a question or make a comment.
Thank you, Madam President. Mark, have we heard anything from the state? Because I, I know we all are anticipating that revenues to the state will be dramatically impacted by COVID-19. Have we, have we had any conversations with them about their ability to, to guarantee those funds? I know it's the law, but things are, are pretty catastrophic right now.
Yeah, they are. Yes, we have had discussions with the state. They've given no indication that our people figure is even in the discussion phase in terms of any kind of an adjustment to that. We have ourselves kind of modeled state finances. As you can see on this slide, as opposed to the great recession back in 2010, 2011, the state has a significant rainy day fund. It's over $400 million currently. And so that really does help buffer the state. But as, as we, as we said, a lot of this depends on how long our recession will go on and, and the depth of that recession. Certainly though, that third stimulus act, that CARES Act, will also help the state. There's millions that will go to states to help them weather the storm. And there is also talk of a fourth stimulus act. What will be in there is anybody's guess. But I, I know that many governors have already started lobbying for increased support to states in a fourth stimulus act. So at this point, we believe the state can get through fiscal year 20. And then we will see where kind of we stand in terms of the disease that we're facing and, and the recession. I hope that answered your question. Short, short answer is yes.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Going back to other possible recessionary impacts, certainly in terms of our local revenues, we expect to see a hit to the government services tax. It's, it's not like anybody can buy new cars right now or, or inclined to. So based on depreciation schedules that are in place, we expect to see a 10% decrease in that revenue for at least three months. And again, we'll just have to see kind of the course of the recession and what kind of recovery we see. Our investment earnings also likely will take a massive hit. We went from a short-term interest rate, the Fed funds rate of 250 at the beginning of this fiscal year and now it's down to zero. So there are going to be some revenue impacts. But again, that stimulus act should help buffer some of those impacts. So we've talked about the state and its ability to guarantee our per pupil revenue. And again, at this point, I don't see cause for alarm, but certainly we're going to be monitoring that. We will continue to prize the board of any changes. Anything we hear will certainly relay. And we've kind of focused on the general fund here, but certainly capital funds will also feel the impact of any kind of a recession. As you know, we receive a significant sales tax revenues to fund our WC1 Capital Improvement Program. And our plan is come, to come back to the board, Pete, Adam and I, probably next month, to talk about our, our future CIP. And we can talk about the modeling we've done in terms of the sales tax. But at least at this point, and we're continuing to model things, but at least at this point, we don't see any deferral or delays of new school construction. But again, this goes for, for everything we've been talking about. Things are so fluid and change from day to day. So we'll, we'll be reporting back to you in April on this. But at the current point in time, again, we feel good in terms of what we've modeled and our ability to cover debt service on our bonds and our future bonds. And so there may be some tweaks to the CIP, but at this point, nothing dramatic.
And Mark, just for the general public, the CIP is the...
I'm sorry, the CIP stands for our Capital Improvement Program. And this is our schedule of capital projects that include both new school construction, but also repair and upgrade and rehab of our existing schools.
Thank you.
So obviously we face, you know, four significant unknowns that we're going through right now and that we may go through next fiscal year. That's a lot to digest, I know. But as shown on this slide, we have a contingency plan that we think will help manage, manage us through these issues. And so that contingency plan basically calls for, as you can kind of see on the screen, waiting to understand the impacts of, of many of the things I've talked about. So first, if you go down to the bottom of the screen, we will know where we ended up fiscal year 20 in September and October. And, and the reason why it's so late in the season and, and four months after the end of fiscal year, there are significant accounting accruals we have to make and we don't actually receive our last DSA payment until August. And so that's when the state will true up their funding of Washoe County School District based on enrollment numbers and our other revenues. But by September and October, we will know where we ended up fiscal year 20. Last fiscal year, you'll remember, we ended up with a small surplus. I am hopeful that we will end up fiscal year 20 even with the impacts of COVID-19 in a positive situation. And so that gives us greater ability potentially to use fund balance to cover some of these costs. So we also won't know kind of the impacts of going to the second line of, of enrollment changes until count day in October. You'll also remember the current collective bargaining agreement with teachers calls for 1% COLA based on how we end up fiscal year 20. So that won't be decided until, again, we get our fiscal year 20 results finalized. And then the recession by the fall, I think we'll have a much better sense, obviously, of whether we've seen that V-shaped quick recovery that many of us hope for based on the stimulus that the federal government has provided, or whether this is going to be a much slower rebound and recovery. So we will know that better in the fall. Probably the only thing that I think we'll have a better sense of before the fall will be the resolution of settlement discussions on Incline Village. I do expect the county to kind of reach a conclusion and either decide to settle or not to settle before the end of the current fiscal year because they will also need to budget for those payments, just like we will. So I would expect us to know that by June 30th. But basically our plan then is to provide you with updates on each of these issues and our financial situation going into the fall. If I go back to the prior slide, you can, you can see that some of these impacts are ongoing potentially and some are one-time. It is completely legitimate to use one-time sources like fund balance to cover one-time costs like the Incline Village tax lawsuit. So that would be our approach. So that would be our approach. And then we can assess what our enrollment actually looks like on count day in October.
Mark, trustee Cotto has a question or comment.
Yeah, thank you. For the Incline Village one-time payment, you said that potentially the payments could be made over a number of years. Would the county take our portion over that period, or would they take our portion all at once and then make the payments over a number of years? So how how is the transfer of money going to work?
Good question. So if it's like 2010, 2011, they would debit our future property tax distributions on kind of a pay-as-you-go basis over time. So as they process refunds in quarter one of next fiscal year, they would take that amount and debit debit our future property tax distributions by that amount. And then the same would happen for quarter two and quarter three and so forth. That's how they that's how they did it in 2010, 2011. That's what we would urge the county to to do if it came to that. And and we've kind of shared that thought with the county commissioners. But again, this this potentially is one of the discussion points and settlement discussions. And so again, we don't have a seat at the table currently on those discussions. So I can't I can't guarantee you that that it will work like it did in 2010.
So I just want to make sure I have this right. We wouldn't take 8.34 million out of our reserves and pay the county. They would deduct over time their payments to us. And then we would have to figure out how to make up for that loss over that period of time.
That's right. If it if it follows the approach in 2010, 2011, yes.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense. I I I thought we would have to take 8 million right out of the fund balance right now, which is tough to think about. Over over time, it's not any better, but at least over time, it's not like a hit right at once. You can kind of figure out how to make this work depending on how long we are going to be expected to do this. Hopefully, we won't have to do it at all, or hopefully this gets resolved in a different way. But I guess worst case scenario.
Yep. Yes, that's
And Student Representative Noble, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, Mr. Mathers. So if they give us money on a need basis and debit it that way, how do they assess that? Do we request money? Do they independently verify? How does all that work? Assuming things proceed like they did in 2010.
What what the county will do, it'll actually be the county treasurer who has to research each parcel and the ownership history for each parcel. And what they would do is process checks to those owners based on, again, on who owned the property when. And they have somewhat of a priority order on on how they do that. But as they process those checks, then they would tally them up. You know, at the end of the period and that dollar amount would be the amount they would debit our property tax distribution by.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. That clears things up a bit.
Great. So again, I know it's daunting to consider all of these impacts at once. And I told you this would be the worst part of your day and probably is, I'm thinking. But, you know, our expectation is not all of these will come up, you know, against us. We don't want to try to construct a budget based on unknowns at this point. We don't want to construct a worst case scenario budget at this point. You know, again, we're hopeful with stimulus dollars and with continued state support, we can weather through this. And and so again, our recommendation is to file a balanced tentative budget with the state. We'll continue to track these issues. When we think there's better clarity on any of these issues, we'll bring that to you and we'll talk about a strategy of how to fund that. But again, our recommendation at the end of the day is to wait to see how fiscal year 20 resulted. And again, I'm hopeful we will see a surplus. And if need be, we can access that fund balance in the fall, prepare an augmentation to the budget to pay for items that we may have to confront and approach it that way. So unless there are other questions, I think Mike will now cover quickly some of the questions that you had in February that you wanted us to take a look at.
Thank you so much, Mark. I appreciate all the work and trying to forecast what we're headed into. But I think that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, there was a few items of concern at the last board meeting and requests for information. One of them was about our GT program at GOM Elementary School for what we call school within the school and class size reduction cost. What would cost to decrease class sizes? You want to go to the next slide, Mark? Thank you. So the SWAS School Within a School at GOM wasn't really a request for an additional bus route. No decision has been made on that. It's not included in the tentative budget. If the board wanted to include it in the tentative budget, we could at this point in time. The cost is about a little over $24,000. And right now, we would really just reduce the contingency account and take those funds and put it towards the transportation cost if the board were to approve that. So that's a decision point for the budget that you'll have to make either now or later at some point in time, preferably now.
Mark, this is Malina. I have one question on that is, do you know how many students would be affected by this addition?
So it's my recollection is it's less than 15.
And is this one of our just big buses that we'd be using? Or is there a different transportation model you looked at?
This analysis was prepared by our Transportation Department, so I'm not entirely sure whether they looked at a smaller bus or whether it would be our standard bus. So unfortunately, I can't answer that. The $24,000 reflects basically the fuel costs for a bus, the an additional bus service, as well as the labor associated with a a share of a bus driver's time.
And so you would be, I see Vice President Taylor, do you have a question or comment?
I probably more of a comment, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. This was, as I recall, I asked staff asked the interim superintendent to direct staff to do a little research and and do a little follow up because of the the impact of not having the GT program in other parts of the community. In in case you don't recall this conversation, I remember it was a student that came with this, I often want to say Wyatt, with his mom. They came and I asked that they look into this. So thank you, first of all, for doing this, for getting the information. And I thought I would just share because I was the one that asked, because it's really important to me for all students. Yes, that's this is about equity. It's really important to me that all all students have the opportunity to be involved in the GT program. It's it's a it would be great to know how many students are involved in it, because I have to tell you with with the unknowns that are out there, it's hard to I'm a little less likely to recommend that we take on additional costs. Just because we have a potential pretty large budget ahead of us. So that makes it I'm I'm wavering some on this. I just wanted to kind of share that since I was one that asked for some more information in this area.
So Dr. Tabor, I'm I'm looking at the analysis transportation prepared total of sorry, I'm calculating it. 14 students that get picked up in it for GOM. And so we'd be taking those 14 students. And instead of one bus being utilized under this proposal, one bus would pick up eight students and the other bus would pick up six.
Okay, and they would they would pick those kids up from where they are, which I think it's more in the northern, more east part of the district and then take them to GOM so they could participate in the SWAS program.
Right. And I'm I misspoke. And hopefully Pete can jump in here if I'm making any other errors. I'm I'm sorry. There are 22 stops total. I'm sorry, 14 total stops. And instead of one bus making 14 stops, under this proposal, one bus would make eight stops and the other bus would make six stops. I don't know how many students are at each stop.
Okay.
Interim Superintendent McNeil, do you have any information on that?
I do. So it would be a total of approximately 13 students that would be impacted by this additional round. It fades off about 15 minutes each way for the for the total round.
And you said it shaves off about 15 minutes each way?
Way.
And their round trip currently is is how long? Do you remember that?
76 minutes.
It's currently 76 minutes round trip, so we'd be cutting it down to 46 minutes?
Roughly, yes.
Forty forty six. Thank you. That's very helpful to know. Any other trustees have any questions on this issue right now? I do think my understanding, Mike and Mark, is you would like us to provide you with some direction today on this item. So maybe we can move forward to the next item. And when we get to the end of the presentation, we can have a discussion around what we want to do for our next steps.
Okay.
The next item was concerning class sizes. As our budget survey pointed out, and numerous board members have discussed, class size reduction is a priority amongst a lot of priorities. But when we're looking at class sizes and saying if we really want to impact class size, what's the cost there? What this chart does is break it down into half students. I know a half student doesn't seem possible, but it'd be like one class would get reduced by one student and another class would stay the same. So it's not an arm and a leg, stuff like that. But when you look at it, just a half student costs a little over $2 million. And that's basically providing increased number of teachers to to teach the class. When you go to one student, it adds another 28 teachers and another 2 million. So if you look at the cumulative total to decrease class size by one student would require over 57 teachers and about 4.2 million dollars. And as you increment up, if you're looking at a two-student decrease, then it's 113 teachers and about 8.3 million dollars. So it's just to really provide a perspective on what it would take to to look at this area as a priority. Obviously, we have other priorities. I think at some point in time, we kind of have to rank all these. And hopefully, at some point in time, we would have additional resources to address this or possibly other savings or shifting of cost to help out this area.
Thank you. It was definitely something I was interested in getting more information on. But boy, does time change? And boy, do things change. So you know, obviously, to me, this is something that we we can't discuss at this time and and have to put off for a future point in the district's financial, you know, situation. So you know, to me, this is although I would love to be able to enter in the conversation more, to me, this is something that we just are not in a position to discuss at this time with the unknowns. All right.
So this is kind of where we go from here. Next steps. Mark's already talked about a lot of these. There are so many unknowns. One thing that we haven't adjusted for yet in the budget is normally, the second year of the budget is easy as second year of the biennium, because everything's kind of set in the legislative process. So you know what your per pupil funding is. We've got our pro forma from the Department of Taxation. A lot of the other grants that the state provides for categorical grants, we have a little better feeling for those in the second year. But one thing they do have to do in the second year is adjust the per pupil amount. Right now, it's set by law to be $6,084 per student. But that gets adjusted based on this new Department of Taxation pro forma that just came out. So they basically run those numbers through the current Nevada plan. And it will redistribute some of that per pupil funding. Typically, it's a dollar or two maybe, but I've seen a year where it's been $10, $11. So we're still waiting on that adjustment. We should have it prior to when we have to file our final budget. And by law, we have to have a hearing on the tentative budget. And it has to be in May, no later than the 20 or I think the 11th and not or no yeah, no, no, earlier than the 11th and not later than the 30th. Right now, it would be our regular board meeting scheduled for May 26. We actually have until June 8 to file the final budget, but we would have to call a special meeting or in order to do that. So where our intent is to bring the final budget to the board on May 26. And this adjustment would be part of that. And hopefully, it's it's not a major difference. And for everything else, like Mark said, we really have to take this day by day. And it's going to take a little longer time to really assess what's going on with all this stuff and how it impacts us. We always hope for the best. There's a lot of different a lot of different things happening with stimulus funds and state budget and just how long this income thing, the last goes on the recession anyway. And we will obviously come back and update you as as we get information on all this stuff. Right now, we're over an hour, and I'm not sure what you intended, how far you wanted to get. We do have other information. There's a lot of different ways you can look at the general fund. Just gives you a better idea of what the major revenues are, what the major type of expenditures are. We also have Attachment C in the board packet. And it breaks down our budget for the general fund and some special revenue funds by chief and department. So it gives you another way to look at the budget. I'm not sure how far you want to get into this stuff. We also have other funds. We really haven't talked about our other funds. General Fund is our biggest fund, so we're always focused on that. But we do have other funds that are part of this. Those are included in the PowerPoint presentation. And they're also included in the Department of Taxation forms, which are part of attachment B to the board item. The one thing to know about other funds, though, is we're talking about a lot of impacts that could happen. And then we don't know those right now. But when you're looking at other funds, they don't really help us out, because most of these, as you can see from this side, these funds are restricted for specific purposes. And then the closest thing we could get would be some type of special revenue fund that would allow us to shift costs that typically we pay for in the general fund. Most of these funds are things that we don't provide for in the general fund. So you can't just take costs out of the general fund and put them over there. It's supplanting and it's in violation of what these funds are supposed to be used for. I just kind of wanted to get out that out there, because we could be facing some some really difficult decisions and challenges. And as much as we would like to use other sources, we're really restricted and limited on the extent that we can use those. So do you have a preference of where you want to go from here? Because this could take a few more minutes if we want to get into some of this stuff.
Well, thank you, Mike and Mark. And looking In looking through this, the remainder of the presentation is is similar to our our kind of general budget presentation that we did at the budget, virtual budget meeting, is that correct? Or does it get more in-depth even than that?
Well, this is a little more in-depth, because we're talking about other funds, and it's building insights fund. I mean, they kind of allayed here, that's not a huge one. It's only if we sell a property, we have to recognize those proceeds in this fund. The only real source of funds in there right now is cell cell tower proceeds, which most of that goes to the schools to spend. Capital projects, you receive constant updates on those. The funds we're getting, the bonds we intend to issue, what we intend to use those bond monies for, which projects. Those are part of that budget right now. Special education fund, that's the amount statewide is set, it's set to increase, we anticipate getting a portion of that. And in that fund, we also account for the same type of things we do for our general fund, which would be, we have a lot of employees in that fund. They roll up on salary schedules, they are subject to health insurance increases, things like that. So that fund really mirrors what goes on in the general fund. Same with the class size reduction fund. We receive special state money to keep classes in grades one through three at a lower rate. There will be some increased revenues there, and those will pay for additional costs, similar to what the general fund has to pay for for roll-ups for teachers, movement on salary schedules and health insurance costs. Special revenue funds, you'll probably see a lot more fiscal year twenty-one versus what we saw in twenty, because when we started fiscal year twenty, we really didn't know about these new state funding programs, the categorical grant, how much of those we would get. We have those for fiscal year twenty now, so we can kind of project those out better for fiscal year twenty-one. So that's a major change there, is just inserting some of those new read-by-three grade fundings and safety funding and SB one seventy-eight. Debt service, it just set aside to pay for obligations we've issued bonds for. Internal service, one thing there would be the the property and casualty insurance fund. We are putting one point one million dollars more into that to provide for increased costs there. The other two funds, our workers' comp fund and our health insurance fund, we feel pretty good about coming into the next year. Enterprise fund, that is the nutrition services fund. Obviously, that could take a big hit right now due to serving lunches and not getting reimbursement for those lunches, as Mark had talked about earlier. We don't know what the budget looks like for next year. It's going out for RFP, that RFP should be coming, request for proposal should be coming to the board on May twelfth. So we should be able to incorporate whatever comes out of that into the final budget. And our last fund would be other post-employment benefits, which is kind of like a pension fund or paying retirement. But this really addresses insurance costs. And down the road, it basically mitigates really huge increases in insurance costs when we're able to use those funds. So I'd be happy to answer any further questions you might have about that type of stuff.
Great, I think you could open it up for any other questions or comments from the trustees. And if anyone does want to get more in-depth into any of these other funds, then we'll we'll have you do that, but I think otherwise, maybe we'll just do that kind of overview that you just provided for for now on all those funds. And then I will just say, as we move into the discussion period, that there is still time to submit any public comment on this item by emailing j b a t c h e l d e r at washoschools.net. And at the end of our our discussion, we will take a moment to read any of those public comments that are submitted. Not read them aloud, but read them individually, and we will read off the names of anyone who has submitted public comment at that time. But now I will open it up. Do any trustees have any questions or comments on this agenda item? Okay, oh, Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. You see my wave or the mic? You see the wave?
The wave.
The wave, okay. You know, I was, I'm going back to the item on the SWAS, on the kids from SWAS. Man, they, I mean, they save fifteen minutes each way, that's kind of a big deal. You know, I'm wondering if, but I certainly recognize the times that we're in. I'm wondering if when we finalize this budget in May, if we may have another opportunity to look at it, if possible, because then we'll know a little bit more about how we stand, it's it's almost two months from now. And they may give us a little bit more of a picture. I just want to make sure we're giving, for myself, every consideration to those students that are making that long bus ride. And when you're in elementary school, man, fifteen minutes each way is kind of a big deal. And it's not thirteen students, it's thirteen stops. So it's like, okay, it's it's a little bigger than I thought. So I would like to just have an opportunity to leave it on the table if we get a little bit more clarity. But again, like this time, three weeks ago, I would have voted for it and said, hey, let's do it. But I certainly recognize the times that we're in.
Thank you. Trustee Cottle.
Yeah, thank you. Going on the same, the same topic, my struggle is the precedence. That's a lot of money. We have sixty-four thousand kids. We have a lot of students right now and families that are on us, but walk zones. And I get concerned about, I think in the grand scheme of our budget, twenty-four thousand dollars is a small amount. But when we look at sixty-four thousand kids, and this impacts up to fourteen kids, that's a hard one for me, because we're going to hear from other communities of what about us? We want to have a bus too. And if we go to a board meeting, maybe we can get that. I think it sends a tough precedence, and I also don't think it solves the issue that they're having. It is trim, it trims away time on the bus, but the issue is still, it's schools so far away, and we don't have the regional site. So I struggle with that. I struggle with a budget item for for this when we have transportation needs really across our district.
Interim Superintendent McNeil.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the thirteen students is how many were originally impacted when we, for budgetary reasons, closed the program at Whitehead and moved to GOM.
So is do we know how many students would be impacted by adding a bus stop? Is it thirteen?
I think it would be thirteen students, I'm checking right now.
While we're checking on that, trustee Simon Holland, is your question related to this then?
It is, thank you, President Raymond. I think also because we have some sixth graders who, future sixth graders who will be moving out of that area into middle school, those numbers may change next year. So I think Vice President Taylor's suggestion of let's let's look at this again later on when we have all the facts. I'm, I appreciate trustee Cottle's comment that, again, this is a Band-Aid on what the real problem is, which is a distribution of sites that is more regional. And I know staff is working on that, so maybe we can bring those two questions back when this budget is due for final approval. What progress have we made, if any, on on regional site location? And then what are the, what's the exact number of students that would be affected by it?
Yeah, and just let me clarify a little bit. So it would impact all the students that are riding those two routes. It would help lessen the route time for all the students by going to two buses. That's part of the cost right there. But all the students taking the bus would benefit from the reduced amount of time. And we're trying to get the exact number, how many would be on the bus, but some of it is that parents are transporting right now as well, too. And then to the information as far as the additional site, if the trustees will recall, that's what staff was working on as far as more equitable regional plan, and whether that would be, you know, adding a particular program to Bow Hat out in the Spanish Springs area, that was, you know, something that was under consideration, too, at that at that point in time.
Yes, thank you. I think for me personally, because this is a smaller amount and relative to the whole budget, it does feel like something we could hold off on deciding, it won't really move us, you know, maybe dramatically one direction or the other, depending on how things change with our financial situation. And so I would also be in favor of of holding off until May to just see kind of where things are to maybe get a little bit more information and figure out, you know, I know we can't lock in how many kids would be taking advantage of the addition of a route, but just to get a better sense of, you know, how many of our students this might impact. And I would agree with trustee Simon Holland that that this is a Band-Aid, but I think it's, you know, worth considering, just because it's something we've been talking about for over a year now, you know, this came up initially, I know. So I would like to just see if if it can be possible, and I I know that the staff would like us to make a decision today, but if it's possible to hold off on this, I'd be in favor of that. Trustee Simon Holland?
Thank you, Madam President. If if trustees don't have any other questions, I would be prepared to make a motion.
I think I'll just double-check with our recording secretary, JJ. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
We received public comment from John Epalito.
And did you forward that to us?
Yes.
Okay.
I will do it again, just to be sure.
All right, does anyone need a moment to read that? I think we all received it. Okay, then trustee Simon Holland, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we approve the tentative budget as presented for fiscal year twenty twenty-one without the addition of the two items that staff did further research on, and that we would come back on with further discussion in the future on the school within a school's special bus transport.
Second.
All right, so that was motion made by trustee Simon Holland, and the second, I'm sorry, I didn't see who made the second. Was it trustee Minetto?
Yes.
Okay. And then JJ, do you want to do the roll call on this one?
Sure. Trustee Calvert?
Aye.
Trustee Cottle?
Aye.
Trustee Simon Holland?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly?
Aye.
Trustee Minetto?
Aye.
Trustee Raymond?
Aye.
Trustee Taylor?
Aye.
The vote was unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you so much, Mark and Mike, for the great work. And again, for trying to help us forecast what we might be looking at. And I really do appreciate your looking forward and having these more frequent updates from you on on our budget in the coming months and into the fall. So I will look forward to hearing more. Hopefully, the news won't get too dire.
Yeah, thank you. We'll look forward to it.
All right, thank you both. Okay, we are now moving on to agenda item five point one, which is discussion and possible action to temporarily suspend activities, events, and meetings of all public bodies and committees of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees until further action by the board to resume. This is for possible action. We have our Chief General Counsel Neil Rombardo presenting for this item. And then I will just remind the public one more time that if you have any public comment on this item, you can email j b a t c h e l d e r at washoschools.net.
Good afternoon, board. So really, simply put, this is in order to comply with the governor's emergency declaration to avoid large crowds. At this point in time, the superintendent has suspended the public bodies, any meetings of the public bodies, until the board could meet and make it official. And so really, this is just a way to make it official, since these boards are technically boards of the committees of the Board of Trustees. And so it just makes sense to get an action from this board at this time. Since this is our first meeting since the declarations went out, we felt like this was appropriate. We didn't think it was necessary to have an emergency meeting. This was posted, and the public all had a chance to participate. We haven't received any complaints from any members of any other public bodies that I'm aware of wanting to go forward. As you know, the rules, and this is why we're using Zoom and having public comments done via email. The governor in Declaration Six of the Emergency Declarations, Directive Six, suspended the rules for the open meeting law. So I don't, we as staff don't think it makes sense to have volunteers showing up to public bodies and possibly exposing themselves to the coronavirus, or exposing our parents, families, and students to the coronavirus. So we're asking that you suspend all public bodies until we get this or until this becomes better under control.
Sorry, I was on mute, Vice President Taylor. Now you're on mute.
Sorry. I am ready to make a motion.
I see a few other trustees have, they're, would like to make a question or comment. So I will start with trustee Simon Holland.
No, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, I just want to get some clarification from either Rombardo or on board policy. That's us, it's not necessarily a different committee. And if it's something that we should consider continuing our board policy process, if board policy is a part of this declaration, or are we only talking essentially our external committees with our volunteers?
Yeah, I I think we were, when we drafted this, I think we were thinking more of our volunteer committees, but you can make it clearer in your motion if you do want the board policy committee to keep meeting. I will say that it's my understanding that we're probably going to get behind on adopting board policies. I think we've been, and I think correctly so, committed to addressing the issues that have arisen with coronavirus, and I know that I have not reviewed any policies. I have asked my team to continue to push forward with some that we had in the hopper. But it's really, that's really up to the board, because you're right, that's the, you guys are the board policy committee. So if you want to clarify that in the motion, if you still want to meet, I know our next scheduled meeting is until May anyway. So hopefully, God willing, we'll be able to meet in May, maybe even together, who knows?
I just wasn't sure if it was necessary. I'd be happy to hear out my colleagues on, should we continue to do board policy work, or should we?
I see that interim superintendent McNeil has a comment and student representative Nathan Noble. And I don't know, trustee Kelly, I said, do you have a comment?
No, no comment.
So I'll start with interim superintendent McNeil.
Thank you very much, President Raymond. And I've been told that my mic is not working really well, so John will keep coming in during a break, but I'll be
really well. So John will be coming in during a break that I'll be taking here in just a few minutes. But what I wanted to say is that we do have some, you know, as Chief Rombardo had mentioned, Chief Counsel Rombardo had mentioned, we do have some policies. So this item was really more, as he articulated, for the volunteers and to make sure that we have protocols in place to protect our volunteer board and to, you know, absolutely give to the board, but to continue the policy work. Now, with, with how we're doing the meeting today, it would look very much like that as far as how we would carry forward with the board policy.
Thank you. And student representative Noble?
Yeah. Quick question. Would essential district committees be preserved? Because I think that certain ones might remain pretty important during this, like the COVID-19 task force. That would still go on even though that is a district committee, saving all these schools commissioned. What about those ones? Which committees would specifically be shut down in this really is what I'd like to know. But that's just minutia.
So public bodies are defined as those public bodies that need to comply. They're collegial groups of people who need to comply with the open meeting law. COVID-19 is not a public body because it's, and it's a committee that only advises the interim superintendent. So therefore, it's staff meeting to address the COVID-19. Safe and Healthy Schools doesn't really have a function over COVID-19. And I don't, at some point, that may be something that the board wants to give them, but at this time, it, it doesn't, they don't have any jurisdiction, if you will, that's been given to them over that issue. So I don't see any need for them to meet. I also think one of the things that I failed to mention in the original presentation, because I didn't realize I was presenting this, is that staff, there's a lot of staff time that goes into getting these public bodies together, agendas, et cetera. And as you all know, getting it together on Zoom is, although I think Zoom is great, it's, it's still difficult. And so we really need to have that staff time. And Chris, and the interim can speak better to this if she desires, but staff time is better served at focusing on co-coronavirus or COVID-19 and addressing those issues than trying to set up public bodies at, at this point in time. That would be at least my suggestion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. That clears things up a bit.
Interim Superintendent McNeil, did you have something to add to that?
Just real quick. I mean, you know, it, it obviously is going to impact, you know, I'm just thinking of zoning, you know, however long this lasts, and those decisions will be impacted. But I think we were ahead of the curve for zoning. So I'm not too concerned about that at this point in time. There may come a point in time where we want to revisit this. But I think, you know, zoning was one, Safe and Healthy Schools Commission was another one, the share committee. We were on a pretty good clip for approving curriculum with the share committee. But those are the bodies that we were discussing about.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Simon Holland?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to ask Neil if you thought it would be appropriate that the motion would give the interim superintendent the authority to, to call for a meeting if necessary. I would hate to, if, if one of the committees were needed, I would hate for it have to wait for a board meeting to be able to deal with that.
Yeah, that, that makes, that makes perfect logic to me. Sure. Yeah, we could do that. Or if you choose to make that motion, that'd be great.
Okay. Trustee Caudill?
Yeah, thank you. Any decisions or recommendations already made by our committees? Are those still going to be coming to us? Or are we putting a pause on everything from them?
I think, well, Kristin, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Do you want me to answer this? Or would you like to try to answer?
Go ahead, interim superintendent.
Yeah. And it just depends, you know, as far as it's like the zoning recommendation, trustee Caudill that you were referring to, you know, to put those on a, on a future board agenda, those recommendations would still come forward so long as they have been approved already by the committee.
Well, I think the suggestion made by trustee Simon Holland is great. I, I think the biggest question for me is just the unknown of how long this could last. And if there, there are critical, you know, issues that we need to address using our committees, I know it would be a burden and different. But if we had to try something virtually or, or a different mechanism to get the group together to address important needs, I think my biggest concern around the, you know, zoning or share and those types of committees is the lack of public input that might come due to this situation. And those we know are just important issues that, that need a lot of public, you know, participation and, and voice. So, and I know you know that, Dr. McNeil, and would consider that. I trust you. So I think it is still safe to move forward with a motion that would allow for that. I just, I think, you know, similar to how we looked at today's agenda, that we just need to be sure that we're, you know, not addressing any issues that we really do want a lot of public input until we understand and know better about how much of the public is able to participate in this new virtual style of meeting. So I think everyone's questions have been addressed. I know Vice President Taylor, you were ready to make a motion. Do you want to continue doing that or leave it to someone else?
I, I can certainly do it, Madam President. And then I asked my colleague Katie, if I don't get it in. Trustee Simon Holland, I like your recommendation. So if I don't get that in, then let me know.
And there was also the addition of the board policy committee still meeting.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I remember that. I didn't, I didn't think that even included that committee. Does this include that committee? So I need to intentionally exclude it?
Uh.
General Counsel?
Well, again, we didn't draft it with the intent of that committee being included in this. It was, we, our thoughts were more that would be volunteer committees that, or relies on, which is great to have those members of the pub. We just didn't want to expose them to large crowds, which is what we're supposed to be doing in this time. That was our thoughts. That being said, if you want to make it clear, you can. If you don't, I would not include it as the board po, I would not think this applies to the board policy committee.
Okay, I'll, I'll do it just in case. And that way, the concerns of trustee Caudill are addressed. Madam President, here's, here's my, here's my shot. I moved that, I moved that the Board of Trustees temporarily suspends the activities, events, and meetings of all public body committees of the Board of Trustees, except for the board policy committee until further notice due to the current state of emergency declared by Governor Sislak. And in so doing, empower the interim superintendent to call meetings of such committees should she find it appropriate.
All right. Motion by Vice President Taylor?
Second. Go ahead.
Second by trustee Calvert. And JJ, do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
We do not.
All right. If you'd like to do the roll call vote for us, please.
You bet. Trustee Calvert?
Aye.
Trustee Caudill?
Aye.
Trustee Simon Holland?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly?
Looks like we lost him.
Trustee Minetto?
Aye.
Trustee Raymond?
Aye.
Trustee Taylor?
Aye.
Vote was unanimous.
Thank you. I muted myself on accident. The next agenda item is 5.2. And at this time, I believe our interim superintendent will be leaving the call. She will rejoin us after we are completed with 5.2 and 5.3. And so 5.2 is discussion and possible action related to an update for the Board of Trustees on the superintendent of schools for the Washoe County School District search process and possible action to change the timeline of future search activities based on guidance from the federal and state governments related to the COVID-19 pandemic, such as interviews, town hall meetings, and other publicly posted information, as well as action to direct staff on other possible next steps to ensure the proper functioning of the district. This is for possible action. We're joined by Emily Ellison, our chief human resources officer. And I know that our chief general counsel, Neil Rombardo, is also part of this presentation. I will once again remind the public that they are able to make public comment on this agenda item by emailing j v a t c h e l d e r at washoeschools.net. And so we will begin our presentation and discussion on this item. You will have a short period to continue to submit that public comment. And we will read off any names that have sent in emails for public comment after our discussion. And I will hand it over to our presenters now.
All right. Thank you, President Raymond. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So for the purposes of this item, I will, and for the benefit of those watching, I will review the timeline that we currently have in place and then talk about some of the strategies that are being utilized around the country for districts that are similarly situated and are in the middle of their search process, and then open it up for discussion, obviously, among the trustees. So our current timeline provides for the first in-person interviews with the five candidates who were selected to move forward to occur next Tuesday and Wednesday, April 7th and 8th. From that process, finalists were to be identified who would participate in a town hall. And that event was scheduled for the evening of Monday, April 13th. And then the next step in the process was to be having, was to have those finalists come back for a finalist round of interviews with the trustees on April 14th with the goal of naming a selected candidate on that day. Obviously, COVID-19 is going to have an impact on our timeline and the process that we previously identified. Social distancing orders and travel limitations obviously make execution of these plans more challenging. And our goal today is to consider options and make a determination about how, how best to proceed, given the circumstances. So I looked, of course, with the help of our consultant, James Geta, at what some other similarly situated districts are doing around the country. And really, there was kind of three buckets of approach that I could find. And I am more than happy to cover those with you, but I do want to say that your options are certainly not limited to those presented. If anyone else has any other ideas, Chief Counsel Rombardo and I worked to craft the language for this item in such a way that there could be an open discussion and consideration of, of other ideas as well as it relates to the steps that will be taken, or the timeline, or how we'll go about executing on those steps. So with that, obviously, the first option that could be utilized would be to continue the search process, perhaps with some modification to the activities, depending on the outcome of your discussion today, but to try and facilitate this process virtually. So interviews might look something like this. We're, we're actually doing some virtual interviewing right now for site level principal positions that are open. Obviously, there are maybe technology challenges or limitations that we would need to take into consideration in this format. And I, I think the town hall event might be a little bit more challenging from a logistics perspective to do virtually. But virtually is the first option for facilitating the rest of the process. When we looked at districts who had opted to continue on their timeline and use a virtual approach, there are a couple of school districts in the metro Atlanta area that are using this strategy. And they were a little bit further along in their process and had already had the opportunity to interact with their candidates at least once in person. So they were at a, kind of at a different phase of the process. Excuse me, they were at a different phase of the process. And they also have some different open meeting law conditions than we have here in Nevada. So that's something to consider, consider when thinking of moving to a virtual format. The second option would be to delay the timeline for the search and extend the appointment of interim superintendent McNeil. And one of the considerations, obviously, when we created this timeline, was to be sensitive to candidates who may be coming from other districts or who are current superintendents, who need to give appropriate notice to their current employer for their next contract year. So with the five candidates that are moving forward in this process, three of the candidates are, excuse me, are currently serving as superintendents. One is Dr. McNeil, who's serving as our interim superintendent. Alexa Cunningham, another of the candidates, is already confirmed as not returning to her district for next year. So any delay in the timeline wouldn't impact her current position. But Warren Chilenberg is currently serving as a superintendent and is required to provide notice of his intent to continue for next year to his current employer by May 1st. The other two candidates, Antoine Wilson and Marshall Tuck, are not currently under contract and are working in different capacities in the private sector. So a delay in the timeline would impact the viability, the potential viability of one candidate at this point. As it relates to a delay, I think at this phase, we might just be in a situation where we're hitting pause and not necessarily trying to plan for rescheduling in May, knowing that there's still some uncertainty at the state and federal level about what return to normal, if you will, timelines look like. I think, again, that's certainly open for discussion among this group, but it, I think it could be challenging to try and identify a new timeline at this point, given all of the variables that we're facing. Many, many districts fell into this category. So they were at various stages in their process and had opted to just put a pause on the search at this point and continue with their interim solution until more information was available. Then there were, there's a third option. Nashville Public Schools fell into this bucket. And the third option was, given the extraordinary circumstances that in their district, they felt it was appropriate to cancel the search and move forward with the interim candidate that is currently being utilized. You might remember, they had some extraordinary circumstances prior to COVID-19. They experienced a series of tornadoes that were quite damaging to their, to their community. And so they had a leader in place that had led them through kind of two major situations and opted to go ahead and cancel the search that they were conducting and, and make an appointment at this time. So with that in, in mind, you're certainly, again, not limited to those, those scenarios for consideration. But I would, I think at this point, turn the discussion over to you all. And I'm here, of course, to answer any questions that you might have and think through what this could look like moving forward.
Thank you very much, Emily. I appreciate the research you did and the work you put into presenting those options to us.
Happy to help.
All right. Did any trustees have questions or comments? I see trustee Caudill, would you like to go?
Yeah. Thank you very much. And my belief for our roles as trustees is to always do what's best, the best interests of our school district, our staff, our families. And in my personal belief, our, our best way moving forward is to end the search and put an agenda item on the next meeting to name Kristin McNeil, our superintendent, due to her leadership for our entire year and the way the staff in our community is rallying around her, due to her leadership in, in this crisis that we're in. I think it would be really bad for our district to change leaders in this, in this time. And I believe that her dedication and commitment to the school district has invigorated our staff and our community in a way that we haven't seen in a really long time. So I support ending the search and going with Dr. McNeil. That's, that's how I'm gonna proceed going forward. Thought about this a lot. And I think that our emails, our, the association staff community that we're just getting, at least I'm getting overwhelmed with them. at least I'm getting overwhelmed with them. It's pretty, it's inspiring to me that our community is coming around our leader, our leader. And I think it's time that we, we recognize that. And we, I respect the consulting firm. I think it did a great job, but I do believe that we got what we asked for. We, I think we have clarity on our best way forward. So that's, that's how I believe we should, we should proceed. Be happy to hear anyone else thinks. I know, Ms. Ellison, that wasn't one of your options, but I want to state that that's how I, how I feel right now. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. I see, I think I saw Trustee Taylor, and then Nathan, and then Trustee Minetto. So I'll start with Trustee Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, that was one of her options. It was option number three. Another school district had done that. And I'm gonna say a couple of things. One, I'm gonna, I'm gonna concur that there's been a, just an outpouring of support, I believe, in terms of, you know, look at all the emails that we've had. And yeah, I'm sure we've all had conversations with people as well for the job that Interim Superintendent McNeil has done. I've, I've said something to her myself on various occasions. I just think that, I don't know if this situation for us could have been handled any better. Quite frankly, you know, you don't plan for this stuff, after all. But it's hard to get it right, and it's really easy to get it wrong. And, and I don't, I don't, I would think, and I don't think, I don't think she got it wrong at all. I would also say that I think it's important for us to put the search on pause. The, the primary reason, quite frankly, that I think I want Interim Superintendent Dr. McNeil to go through the process is because we didn't go through a process last time. And I think in the end, it didn't, didn't turn out to be best for anybody, for, for the district, for the candidate, or anything like that. I do, I will say this on the record. I don't know if, I don't, I can't imagine somebody being able to come in and beat her, and beat her, quite frankly. I can't even imagine that happening at all. Because I think we all feel very good about the, let me speak for myself. I could not feel better about the job that she's done. And my confidence in her, quite frankly, has been elevated throughout this, the handling of this pandemic. It has absolutely been, been elevated. And this been, she's been very impressive. She's been very impressive. And again, I don't, I don't think anybody could come in here and beat her. And, but that being said, that's their challenge. But what I, but I don't want to make some of the same mistakes we've made before. And I'm, I was here on that board and, and in the end, voted for that. And I think it's important for this community, not just so this reached out. There's a whole lot of families and things in the community. I think it's important for the community to feel like, as a whole, that they've had an opportunity to be involved in the process. So my vote would be to put it on pause. And absolutely, I don't have a problem at all going on the record saying that she, she's pretty hard to beat. She's pretty hard to beat.
Thank you, Trustee, or Vice President Taylor. Student Representative Nathan Noble.
All right. Look, I really understand the reasons why we wanted to go through the search process. It was the right decision at the time. And it is important that we set a precedent of having a process. But with that being said, these are unprecedented times. From a student's perspective, there's massive instability, as it is with the outbreak of COVID-19. It is, it's, quite frankly, a little bit scary. Having Dr. McNeil as a pillar of support, having her there to lead the way, has been enormously helpful. Based on what I've heard from my peers and based on my own opinions, she's really taken charge of this situation. And she's done an outstanding job amidst, quite frankly, a terrible situation. Dr. McNeil, even though it would be a suspension of process, really is the right choice in this case. Because right now, we need to minimize instability and put forward someone who can balance things out. Just from the perspective of a student, that would help to assuage the turmoil quite a bit. We live in tumultuous times, and that requires bold action. And my opinion is that the right move is to move Dr. McNeil into a position of the permanent superintendent. I concur with Trustee Cottle and with Vice President Taylor. And I would urge the members of the Board of Trustees to appoint Dr. Kristin McNeil as the permanent superintendent of Washoe County School Districts, for experience and all the good things that she has done. I yield my time now. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Minetto, and then I, I know we've got Trustee Simon Holland and Trustee Cottle both waiting to speak after that.
I totally agree with Trustee Cottle and our student trustee in that she has more than proven herself. I mean, she's proven herself for the last months and then these last few weeks. It's, I get really emotional because I think, what an amazing job she has done. And I think that we need to cancel, because things have changed. I think we need to cancel the search and have a future agenda item to present her as a possible, just putting her in.
Thank you. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I too have been utterly amazed by the leadership qualities that Dr. McNeil has demonstrated, not only during this past few weeks, but since she was appointed July 1st. I was very impressed by the letter that was written by the WEA, our Washoe Education Association, talking about some of the important things that she has contributed that, that we need going forward. And I do support appointing her as the superintendent. And I also want to convey to my colleagues on the board that we have a job to do with the public who aren't as close to what's been happening as parents and students and staff have been. There are many folks in the community who, who don't really understand the amazing work that Kristin has done. And so, you know, I call on all of us to vigorously explain and, and share the reasons why this is the right decision. You know, we've worked very hard to build public confidence, and we want public confidence in her. And that was part of the reason for having this process, as others on the board have said. So I just, I do support the notion of bringing it back for appointment of her. And I also want to make sure that we do our job and let the community know why this is the right decision. The fiscal issues that we're going to be facing, there will be tremendous decisions that have to be made over the next year or two years, depending on what happens with our state's revenues. The morale that she has worked so hard on, and as Nathan said, there is so much instability now. She has righted the ship, both since July and now in the last few weeks, in a way that we have been inspired by her leadership and so have so many employees been inspired by her leadership. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I see Trustee Kelly, but I'll go to Trustee Cottle. I see your hand up, your virtual hand is up.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm clear on the record that this isn't, this wasn't like a knee-jerk reaction for me. I mean, it's been an accumulation ever since July of 2019 up until now. And the way I look at this is that I don't know how she looks at it, but this is almost like the final exam. And after a year of being interim, thrown into a crisis, how are you going to lead 8,000 employees, 64,000 students, and a community of 400,000 residents? And I believe she's done such a great job. And the uncertainty of her having the interim tag is spelt at the chief level, and that trickles down all the way to our schools on, look, are we really thinking about making a change right in the middle of this crisis? And that's why I think the outpouring from our staff is just showing their support, but also letting us know, like, look, we have full confidence in what she's doing. We cannot do this to us right in the middle of this. And I haven't been here as long as others, but we haven't really, at least in the short time I was here before, we didn't have staff support everywhere saying, stay the course, stay the course, stay the course. Things are getting better, morale's improving, the outreach and the communication. And this is all in a crisis. And it shows them that we are going to take that next step. And we have to remember that if we have confidence in her to do this, we need to make this move because as the interim, she does have her hands tied in certain areas. She's doing multiple jobs. She can't go hire a deputy to help her because she's still the interim. She's not able to take us forward through this crisis in the next year with, as an interim. Once we remove that interim tag, now she can really take off and send us in the direction that she envisions us going. She's done a great job doing that, but there are some ways that she just can't move forward as long as she's the interim, which is what is expected as the interim. So I just want to make sure that if anyone's watching, and it's not like the board is just making a reaction because, you know, COVID-19 happened. To me, it's an accumulation of all the months of this year. And I remember last summer, there were some bumps in the road. But when we all first started riding the bike, we crashed a lot in the few first attempts. And then we got better. And I've seen tremendous growth in her. And to me, what touches me is having our staff rally around her in a way to send us a message, like, we, we're good, let's get this done. And I, like, I respect the process, but to me, my job as a trustee is to look out for our district, do what's best for our district, more than to, to follow a process that, when things have changed. So I just want to make sure I had that on the record because I don't want people thinking that this is just a reaction to what's happening. And we weren't, you know, I was thinking this for a long time, but this has kind of pushed me to that point. So thanks.
Thank you. And Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I agree. I mean, you don't change the top leader during a crisis unless that leader has been failing. And I think that all of us and the community has seen that she hasn't been failing at all. She's really stepped up. And I've had the privilege of working with Dr. McNeil back in, since starting in January 2009, when she was just a little itty-bitty academic director. So I've seen her progress over the years as she's assumed more and more leadership responsibilities. And since taking over in July, again, yeah, there were a couple little missteps, but I've just seen her grow into the role. And the people that have worked closest with her, with her leadership, her leadership team, the principals, key leaders around the community that are outside of the school district but are working with her, they've all said really positive things. But it's really been the last few weeks where we've seen her just rise to this occasion and move our district in a way that I've been really impressed with. I haven't seen that level of leadership in a long time. And she's really done a great job with it. So I also support having a future agenda item at the next meeting where we, we appoint her as the permanent superintendent. But I think it's good for the
I think we may have lost you. Trustee Kelly, can you hear me? Well, I know Vice President Taylor wanted to say something. If you don't mind, just squeeze in my opinion, my two cents on this. You know, I, I think, haven't gone more than 12 hours in the last two weeks without talking to Dr. McNeil. We have become very close through the last few weeks in this crisis. And, you know, I would agree with everything that everyone has said. And, you know, no one has said anything about her that I don't agree with. The leadership has been incredible. The, you know, dedication to all, all elements of this, you know, completely unprecedented pandemic have, I've just been so impressed with. And I've thought a lot about this leading up to today. I think it first struck me back in the first week of March that we might have to rethink this search process because of the impacts, as Emily said, to travel, to, you know, all of the different components that we had built around our search. And the, you know, most I know, critical part of this process for all of us has been public input and public, you know, public participation in this search process. And I think we've done a great job with that. I think there, you know, are probably elements that we could have done a little better. But I think we've done, you know, a very good job of inviting many parts of our community to, to have a part in this. But, you know, I think of even just this conversation that we're having now. I checked a few minutes ago, and I think we were only at about 60 people watching this board meeting currently. And, and this is, you know, the biggest decision we're going to make as trustees. And my concern, and it's not at all related to Dr. McNeil, it is entirely related to trying to make her as successful as possible moving forward, is that we are at such a place in the world right now that we would be making this decision and having an agenda item to do that in a, in a world where we aren't going to be able to have as much public participation. I certainly see how being in a place of crisis and in this midst of this pandemic is reason to have a permanent superintendent in place. And especially, I think, about, as Trustee Simon Holland said, it's not even so much now, it's, it's moving into the summer and fall when, and then leading up to a legislative session where we need that continuity. We need somebody who, you know, is in place that understands our district. And so, you know, really, I'm, I'm just torn. I feel very torn about how to move forward with this decision, ensuring that we do so with a lot of public support. I absolutely have read, you know, all the emails and have been bombarded as well. But, you know, I think we're hearing from a lot of staff, which is very important and, and something I value greatly. I think we saw from the search process so far and some of the survey results and even, you know, some of the conversation we had at our last meeting around the search process that, that the community is, isn't, you know, fully on board at this point. And I, I agree again with Trustee Simon Holland that, that, that role belongs to us to help the community get there. But I, I do worry about, you know, I think that's a lot to do at this time when, again, we're sort of in a crisis mode. And I, I'm just, like I said, really torn. I'm really struggling with how much of an impact I should, you know, weigh on that versus, you know, the need for stability right now, and especially for our staff. I think I've, I've done a little bit of my own research and looking at what other large agencies and organizations and districts are doing around their searches. And, you know, I did hear a lot of people say that there's so much unknown and so much instability right now that, that, you know, that for the, for no reason than to bring stability for staff, that, that is a reason why you would take an interim who is doing an amazing job and make them permanent. So I'm just, you know, trying to think through it still a little bit. I had initially wondered about extending the role of interim longer. I hadn't thought about, and I really like the point that you made, Trustee Cottle, about, you know, that in doing that, we would not be empowering her enough and providing her with the supports enough. I think the comment that you made, Trustee Cottle, about the, you know, being able to hire a deputy is a good one. So, so I'm just, I'm still thinking about it. I can see a lot of support for the, you know, moving forward. And I wouldn't have a big concern about that other than wanting to make sure that our staff could help, however possible, to try to make a more public process out of the next meeting where that would be the agenda item so that we can really engage process out of the next meeting where that would be the agenda item so that we can really engage more people. All right. So I, I'm finished. I now see a bunch of virtual hands up, but I'm gonna go, I know Vice President Taylor, you were, you did a real wave, so. And then I'll go to the others.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. You, you want to go back to trustee Kelly since he's back on now? We kind of lost his comment.
Yeah, trustee Kelly, do you have anything that you wanted to finish up on?
Yeah, sorry about the connection um, cutting out there, but I think where I, where it cut off was, I was just saying that um, if we, I, I support uh, having a, a future agenda item where we appoint Dr. McNeil permanent superintendent. Uh, and I think it's good though, because it also, since that meeting or that vote would be one or two or a couple of weeks from now, it would still give the community plenty of time to email the trustees, to call us, to send us messages on social media uh, saying yes, appointing her is the right move. Or perhaps the community feels differently, but it gives them, it still gives them a lot of time to reach out to us before we would actually take that permanent vote.
Thank you. Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't see whose hand went up. Oh yeah, sorry, Vice President Taylor. That's right.
Thank you, Madam President. I forgot we had a virtual hand. Um, anyway, um, I, I want to, I just as my colleague trustee Cottle said, I want to do the same thing. I, I want to go on the record. Um, that my, my hesitation has nothing to do with the job that I think that um, Dr. McNeil has done. She's done an amazing job. Uh, as I said, I've, I've told her that myself. My, it, it has more to do with um, I was on the other side of that when we didn't complete a search process. And I want to give Dr. McNeil every opportunity to be successful. And in some of my conversations just along the way before, that's where, that's, 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 that's part, that's part of where I think we could have given the previous superintendent a better start. I want to give her the best start possible. Cause she has done an amazing job um, and, and deserved the best possible chance she can to win the job and be successful. And certainly we all have our opinions already as to whether or not she's won the job, but that being here, that being neither here nor there is I just lived through that. And I want her, I mean, it, again, I, I don't know who'd have to come through here and beat her quite frankly. Um, I, some of the same conversation that we're having now is some of the same conversation we had before. And some of these same comments I'm making now, some of the same comments I made before, then in the end, um, um, I went against what I thought probably we should have done. And maybe that was, who knows what would have happened. You, you can't look back, but I, again, I just want, I want Dr. McNeil to have the very best opportunity to be successful um, should you step into this role. Um, and that's, that's, that's my hesitation for it. It's nothing to do with the amazing job that she has done in leading our team. Um, through this crisis and, and the job that she's done leading us since July. So I just wanted to go on record to say that and, and just to reinforce why um, in spite of all of that, um, I think it's best to push the pause button. I'm not saying let's not hire, I'm not, anything like that. What I'm saying is let's push the boss pause button. Maybe when we come back in a month, we see what's going on, where we are and so on, and then make a decision at that point. So that's what I would like to see us do, is just push the pause button for a month.
Let's see, trustee uh, Calvert, you haven't had a chance to speak yet, so I'll let you go.
Thank you, President Malina and everyone else. And I would just kind of like to say that I had a conversation with her today and I did commend her for all the great things that she's done in the district, but I'm on the fence with Malina and with Angela. Because I just feel that because we are in a situation where um, there is a lot of unknown, I just feel that we do need more time. And I agree with you, Malina, that I do believe that we need to give our community the opportunity to come forward. And not only in emails, but if we're, we're able, and I, that's probably not going to happen, but if we can have people express their opinions and express how they feel, then I think that that would really um, help a lot in helping us all to decide what it is that we need to do. But I'm, again, on the fence about it. I thought I had made up my mind, but I just kind of believe that we need to put this on pause, that we can't just go into this with our feelings and with our hearts. We really have to think about our kids, our district, our community, and what's best for everyone. And are we really doing the right thing? By, um, and I believe she has, she's done an awesome job in doing the things that she's done. But we have to look past all of that and look at the future of our students and how we are going to make them successful moving forward. But uh, she has, she's been awesome. But again, I'm on the fence like you. I just believe that um, I'm on the fence. Thank you, Malina.
Uh, trustee Simon Holland?
Thank you, Madam President. I uh, I started the day on the fence. Uh, and one of the things that I read was um, going back through what would have been our next agenda item. Uh, the work from the Center for Executive Solutions and we can or may or may not talk more about that depending on what happens here, but um, in their um, materials, one of the things they talk about is the abundant amount of research that shows that chemistry with the culture of an organization is one of the greatest determinants of positive outcomes for uh, the organization. And that doesn't mean that we want everybody to be the same. It means that we want a leader to be able to um, reflect the culture of the organization and empower and enrich uh, and deepen the culture of the organization for positive outcomes. And, and I was reminded that um, that's one of the things we have heard from the organization is that, that Kristin is a person who has brought life and joy and love and care and inspiration uh, to the people of our district. And that that was really what moved me off the fence. I, I absolutely sympathize and agree with and feel great empathy for um, my colleagues who um, want to pause and, and, and take a look at it and make sure that we have an opportunity for community input. And, and as I said, I think it's really important that um, that the community uh, have the opportunity to have their confidence in her built. Um, one thing I, I might suggest is um, and Neil, you can kick me under the table virtually if I'm off the subject, but um, you know, the contract that we had previously discussed was a three-year contract. Um, and we might consider a shorter term contract if we move forward uh, to appoint her and give some opportunity for folks to become as convinced as we have been. If there's a majority of the board that does wish to move forward, um, give an opportunity for there to be a um, some really specific goals and achievements and for her to be able to win the confidence of everyone. I agree with Vice President Taylor that um, we want her to have every opportunity if she is the person that is um, given that support by the majority of the board. We want her to have every opportunity to build confidence. So just a couple of things, just thinking about the chemistry, thinking about moving forward and then maybe having a shorter term than three years um, for a contract. Thank you.
So just kind of, I, I think you could definitely put that on a future agenda item. At this time, the board has voted to have, you know, three years as your term. You definitely could put that on uh, a future agenda item. You couldn't make that decision today, just like you can't decide to appoint uh, today, because that's not the contemplation of the agenda item. The agenda items, what is the next steps? So, but you definitely could do that. I would also um, just point out, I was at matter calendar, our regular meeting is scheduled for the 14th. I don't know if that's going to happen. So if you started public comment today, if you put a notice up on the website, you don't have to put an agenda to have a notice that we're willing to accept public comments. You can just say we're willing to accept them. We've made this motion. You would have two weeks of public comment. I don't know if that makes a difference to the board or not. I'm just trying to solve your, your uh, dilemmas, if you will, trying to help out.
Thank you. Um, trustee Cottle, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so I, I, I want to say that um, I fully respect and see what Vice President Taylor is saying with her knowledge of being on, on the board. Uh, for me, the, the difference is, is that our community and our staff recognize her Dr. McNeil's almost 30 years of uh, work here in Washoe County. And they respect her commitment to, to our district. And I would say that uh, the reason I, I don't think it's right to pause it and then potentially go forward is that if, if, if I'm one of the other candidates watching this right now, you see right away that we favor Dr. McNeil and it, I don't want to put anyone through a process that is, is a, appears to be a waste of time. Um, I, I do think that the stability of our district and what's best for our staff and students is, is number one. So um, I'm going to make a motion and we'll see where it goes. Um, I'm
Sorry, can I ask a question really quick of Emily before we do that? And then I'll come back to you, trustee Cottle, sorry. Um, just uh, more of a technical question about the contract um, with JG Consulting. Um, how would it work if we ended the contract right now? Um, have we paid? You know, do we owe more money to complete this search? Or what are the kind of technicalities around the payment for the search contract?
So I don't have the contract in front of me, but I can look for it um, while, while you all are deliberating. Um, my guess would be that he's done the bulk of the work and that we would likely um, be on the hook for the full expense, which is fair because he has, you know, generated a lot of recruiting activity and done quite a lot of community outreach. Um, but I'll need to confirm uh, in looking for the contract.
Okay. Um, would we have to bring that back as a, does that have to be a separate motion to end the search officially? Or how do the motions work here? Are we um, do we need to have another agenda item to end the contract, anything like that?
No, I think the, I think the way the agenda item is, is written, it says next step. So the next step is we want to end the search and put uh, end the search today. And the reason why you can't appoint Dr. McNeil right now is her name must go on the agenda pursuant to 241, I believe it's 0355. That's off the top of my head. I could be slightly wrong, but that requires that anytime you're going to consider a chief executive, and I know that trustee Simon Holland knows this from her past, anytime you're going to consider a chief executive, their name must go on the agenda first. So, so arguably it was drafted very broadly so that you could make the type of decisions you're making. I don't think Emily and I, when we drafted this contemplated that you would appoint Dr. McNeil necessarily at this time. We did. That's not a comment on what we think. It's just, we didn't expect that. So uh, her name is not on there. So we would have to have her name on the agenda. And it would be a consideration of her character, that type of thing. She has to receive notice and the opportunity to be heard, just like the other candidates were actually given notice until we had to cancel everything. So that, that's a specific provision to this position.
And then the uh, possible addition of an agenda item to, to adjust the contract? Would that typically happen on the same agenda? Would we need to request that as a separate agenda item? Or would it just be built into the appointment, I guess?
Well, I think you could have, I think there's two ways to manage that. One is you could, at this point in time, the board instructed me in that long meeting that we had together where we drafted it together. Uh, I didn't mean, I saw your smile. I didn't mean that that way, sorry. Uh, but at that point, you contemplated and made a motion to have three years, right? If, if I recall correctly. And so you would have to bring it back. Now you could bring it back in one of two ways. You could either do it as a motion today to bring back that contract, or if you appoint Dr. McNeil, when you appoint her, she still has to accept the contract. So there would still need to be negotiations going on. And at that point, you could change the terms of it as well as part of the negotiations. You would probably appoint a negotiating team like you did last time with uh, I believe it was trustee Taylor and trustee Simon Holland. You don't have to pick those two. The point just being that you would want those type of folks. Um, if, since the contract is pretty much a form contract, I would feel comfortable not having to hire outside counsel since we're done with it and it was written by outside counsel. So I could sit down with if this case Dr. McNeil and her attorney, and we could just handle it that way. There's plenty of ways to manage that situation. I don't know if, and the other thing you could do tonight is take multiple motions. So if trustee Cottle just wants a motion that says suspend and appoint her on the next agenda, you should talk that one out. And then you can ask the board if there are any other motions that they would like to make pursuant to this, because it the agenda item contemplates multiple steps might be taken.
Okay. Um, and I, oh, go ahead, Emily.
I can answer your question. Um, I've been texting with James and said the way that our contract is structured, we would um, be responsible for payment of the first installment for the work already completed. So that's a um, an amount of $15,000, but we would not be billed for the second installment of $15,000 upon placement. So our total exposure would be 15,000.
Okay. Um, uh, student representative Noble, I see your virtual hand is up.
Thank you, President Raymond. Um, just to try and sway some of the people on the fence that have very reasonable concern about transparency and about what to do in a crisis situation, I totally get it. But if I remember my American history class correctly, FDR's campaign slogan in 1940 was don't change horses in the middle of the race. And right now we're definitely in the middle of that race. And as for putting a pause on things, just based on what I've heard, correct me if I'm wrong, seems like there's kind of a pause built into this. Because if we move to put Dr. McNeil's appointment on the next agenda, that gives time for consideration. That kind of puts a pause in there already. So it seems like a second pause might be a bit redundant. But that's just what I've heard. And from a student perspective, again, this would massively help stabilize things. Dr. McNeil's efforts since July have been extraordinary. And to piggyback on what trustee Simon Holland said, the letter from WEA also affirms the confidence of the teachers' unions and all other concerned organizations. And the staff seems to support her as well. So if that helps, that's just what I've heard so far and what I think about the issue. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Well, I know trustee Cottle was ready to make a motion. Um, I would like to just ask uh, JJ, if we have any public comment. Um, I, I do believe I saw maybe one come or two come through while we were talking. Um, and so if we all want to just take a few minutes, check our email and then um, JJ, if you'd like to read off the names of the public comment we received?
We received public comment from Natha Anderson with the Washoe Education Association, David Nissenfeld, Troy Parks, Karen Swoe, Gina Session, Mari Hutchinson, Susan Marble, Susan Kaiser, and Beth Martin.
Okay. Thank you. I think um, everyone had a chance to, to read those then. And so trustee Cottle, I will um, turn it over to you.
Okay. I move with the Board of Trustees, ends the search for the next superintendent of schools. And it puts an agenda item on the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to appoint Dr. Kristin McNeil as the next superintendent of schools of the Washoe County School District. And I asked the school district to make available a public comment location similar to policies uh, leading up to that next meeting.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Cottle.
Second.
I have a second by trustee Minetto. And I will ask um, our uh, recording secretary, oh, I'm sorry, um, yes, further discussion. I see a hand from Vice President Taylor and then I'll go over to Emily Allison.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I just want to say just a, a couple of things. Um, as, as, as we vote, um, I don't want to repeat anything I've already said, but there are a couple of other things I think could be important to share is um, I do think um, in response to student trustee Nathan, I don't think, I want two pauses. I just want a longer pause. I want the longer pause because in 30 days, we're going to know a lot more about where we are. Because if we aren't, if we weren't where we are right now with, with the Because if we aren't, if we weren't where we are right now with with the uh. Covid nineteen situation across the country, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We already had interviews that we were scheduled. We were going ahead and moving forward and so on. We would not be here. So thirty days gives us an opportunity to take a look at, we we should know a whole lot more. Um, by then, at least if we listen to what the uh, what the medical experts are saying. I think it's important that we that we, you know, give full consideration to the the committee that um, that that. Uh, JG Consulting put together and their comments behind it, not because it's a, it's a, they should run this thing, they shouldn't. But they had some comments and I want to make sure that we give full consideration to what came out of the committee as well. We don't always go with the committee and I don't. I don't think we should because we're the ones charged with making the decision. And I think by um. Not moving right now, but giving it a little bit more time, um, it allows that opportunity, that allows that opportunity to do that. Um, and I, and I, and the question I would have is what what do we lose by waiting thirty days? We don't, we don't lose anything by waiting thirty days. It's not, there's not a fire coming, thank God. Or anything like that. We are in the middle of the school year. I mean, we aren't, you know, in the middle of trying to change. School year is gonna start and so. We don't lose anything by that. My my number one priority is absolutely. This district and what's best for this issue and what's best for this district is to give our leader. Every opportunity we can to be successful. Just something to think about. I yield my floor.
And Emily, I think I saw your hand up. Okay, and then we'll go to your trustee Minetto.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I apologize. I believe that I misunderstood James's um. Uh, text update to me. I'm, he and I are still going back and forth to clarify, but the total value of the contract is thirty thousand dollars. So we wouldn't. The the expenses wouldn't exceed that. I I can get clarification for you as soon as possible, but I just wanted to. Make sure the record was clear that our maximum exposure is thirty thousand.
Thank you. I, you know, primarily ask because I do believe that. JG Consulting has done a tremendous amount of work um and have. Um, dedicated a lot of time to this search and and so want to make sure we're whole there and don't want to. Um, and not that we would walk out, you know, away from that. It doesn't in influence my decision. It was more just a technical question. All right, I'll go to trustee Minetto, uh, then trustee Calvert, and then trustee Simon Holland.
Um, I've, I feel like. Stopping the search now helps free up these other people who, if they're watching this, knows, why am I doing this? I mean, that's what I would be thinking if I were in the running. And it frees them up to, if there's anything going on out there, to pursue other things. And that's just a thought I had.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Calvert.
Once again, I just wanted to piggyback on uh. Trustee Taylor, uh, excuse me, Vice President Taylor. And I agree, I think that we do really need to step back and again with you, Malina, I. As I said before, I just think we need to really step back and really think about, because like I said, this affects the community. It affects us. It affects everyone. And I'm not saying that one way or the other, that we're making a good or a bad decision, but I just feel. That it's something that's really important and I hate to say it, I'm still on the fence about it, but Angela, I just want to say thank you. Because I totally agree. I mean, moving forward, we do want to make sure that we have the best candidate possible for the position. Not to say that Dr. McNeil is not that person, but I just believe that we want to give. And if I were in this position, yeah, I'd want to be given the opportunity, if nothing else, to interview, to find out, you know, hey. What am I missing out on or the next interview do I go to? What can I do better to make sure that I, you know, at least get an interview? But I do believe that JJ Consulting has put a lot of time. He's been here several times to make sure that. We're getting what we need as far as a superintendent. And once again, I agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. And I know we're still in discussion about the motion. Um, I I would. I would just want to clarify what what is it that we would do in a pause? Um, is the purpose of a pause to um have virtual interviews? Is the purpose of a pause to have? More community input? If the purpose is to have more community input, then perhaps trustee Cottle would consider. Amending his motion and maybe make a motion for the April twenty-eighth um board meeting. Um, but I just, I would ask Vice President Taylor, what is it that we would do in that, you know, in that month? There is one candidate, um, as Emily told us, who can't wait uh until after May first uh to give. Uh, notice of not coming back for his contract. So waiting a month from now puts us. At May first essentially, and um we would. We would put him in a a tough situation.
May, may I, Madam President?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, I think that's a really fair question. Um, and I would want to be sensitive to. The candidate that has some deadlines because I think, I think that's important. We appreciate people who've who've put in for it. When I say a a month, I mean, waiting two meetings from now, that's four weeks. That's pretty darn close. And for me. Um, the thing I keep going back to is making sure this person, um, our next leader, our candidate, and be it Dr. McNeil, right? Um, who I think very highly of, I want to continue to say that because I don't want it to be confused as anything else because it really isn't. Um, um, then that gets the part of that for me is we didn't have an opportunity to really um before. Um, we we didn't, we didn't put ourselves in a position where the candidate could gain community trust and we can get a great, a lot of great. Community input and feedback like we would have done in a traditional search. So in my opinion, I think you're absolutely right, that thirty days or that. One month, four weeks from now, let's say, right, would be to uh gain more community input um from in in various ways. I like what trustee Cottle said, and that list set up a a formalized, if you will, mechanism for that uh input to come one way or another. And then then under the circumstances that we're in, we've done everything that we can to get to get feedback across the board. Um, I I would feel better about that because it's, I I wanted to win. I want her to win. And if there's something we can do to help make that happen, then I, then I want us to do.
Thank you.
So maybe trustee Cottle will consider that. I'm I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I will quickly just add, I think, just. You know, hearing more from you and and kind of uh thinking on this, um, I. Um, I think the points that have stuck for me are that, you know. Our candidates are like, the other candidates are likely watching this or will watch this and. And I don't know how we move forward really with a a search with that group of candidates when we're having conversations like this. Um, and in a good way, you know, I think uh we are all obviously very um. You know, impressed with the work that our interim superintendent has done uh for good reason. Um, I think the other thing that's, you know, sort of um swayed me is just the idea that, you know, we. We can't really. Do a whole lot differently. You know, if we put the pause button, like you said, I was sort of started thinking about what would it, what would the pause get, gain us? But I I really do like the idea of just. Putting this maybe on that April twenty-eighth agenda. Um, I I think. Any more time where people have to just get a little more engaged in this, I think it doesn't hurt, um, you know. Uh, our interim superintendent's ability to continue to do the incredible work she's doing. Um, and I think it just adds to the ability for the community to have input. You know, there's so much um. Turbulation every day and news. Um, and I just want there to be enough time for people to. Absorb this and have have room to comment. So I would definitely be in support. And I I also do like. Initially, you know, I I like the idea of um a contract that might be shorter just so that we can. Use that as an opportunity as well to increase that public um. You know, and I I haven't had enough time to really think about that, but I like, that was another thing that came up that I I. Like the idea of so. So I um, I guess then it goes back, maybe I. I think Vice President Taylor and I uh it sounds like would ask you trustee Cottle if you would be willing to amend your. Uh, motion for the April twenty eighth meeting.
Yeah, after think, after listening to you all, thinking about it, I. I guess my concern is I just don't know what we gain from an extra two weeks. It's not to say that we don't do that because we may get to the fourteenth and as a board decide. We, let's kick this to the twenty eighth because we didn't hear enough. But I'd be willing to bet at about. Either an hour after this ends or tomorrow morning, this is gonna hit all of our local media outlets and. The people that are gonna give comment are gonna give that comment in very short order. And within fifteen days, we'll have. A lot of feedback. And if we don't, we can always decide on the fourteenth. We don't think we got enough. We can delay it to the twenty eighth. My concern with delay is it shows that we're not committed, that we're not committed to doing this and that. I do believe that that hurts us with staff. I just don't know what we gain by an extra fifteen days, uh, because it it, we get the most. Reaction when initially hits and it'll initially hit in the next few days. And if we don't have an, if we don't think we heard enough on by the fourteenth, um, we can always. Kick it to the twenty eighth. That's where I, I mean, that's what I think about it. I I just. I just don't know what we gain by by uh an extra two weeks that we wouldn't get in the next two weeks that we already haven't heard in the last. Few months. So I mean, that's.
Well, I think that for for me personally, the difference, and it doesn't, to me, it's not a lack of um competence. It's um, you know, we we sort of have a. About a halfway through point on a search where um we named the interim as a finalist. But, you know, we haven't, this is the first public conversation we've had discussing. Really moving forward with her as a permanent and. And my concern is that if tonight Governor Sisalak orders some new directive or tomorrow. Our president has some new um restriction or travel, you know, that that over. Uh, takes the news cycle for a period that we might not have as much of that and that, you know, like I said, I think. There are fewer than sixty people watching this right now. You know, we're missing a big chunk of the community. Following along with this process that we need to make sure they're hearing this, that they're learning about this as an opportunity. And, you know, speaking as a parent, all I can think about is how I'm gonna be teaching my kid from home for the next. Two weeks to three weeks, you know, I mean, it's really hard for me to like absorb. A lot of other stuff right now because I'm also working and doing this and I know a lot of our parents are. Um, and it's a lot right now. Um, gosh, I didn't think I was gonna get emotional, but. You know, it's um, I think there's a lot of stress and pressure on our staff and our families and I want to give them. The space and room to be engaged in this and not feel like we're rushing it. Um, I. Totally understand that, you know. We will get a lot of that public comment probably immediately after this and right before the next meeting. But if if it allows for that room for people to just think and process a little more about why. It's important for us to make this decision. To me, that's important and it it isn't a lack of competence. It's a. It's a opportunity to really go out and share, this is why we're doing this and it's important to get your uh input.
So what um, I was trying to help, trying to get to just think this through. I guess my perspective and put it in context is that on any given board meeting at sixty is pretty good. If we had sixty people in the boardroom or. In the central office, that would be a pretty well-attended meeting. Uh, so we're not making the decision tonight. So I think that would be different, making the decision tonight. We're making the decision the next meeting, so we will probably get more public comment. Then, and based on my motion, my motion is to end the search. So if we do. April twenty eighth and we get there and we're not really sure we want to do it, like as of today, the search is over. So I mean, if we, if if trustees don't want to end the search, then. I mean, my motion is to end the search. We can't appoint, if I could, if I could move to appoint her tonight, I would. But open meeting law doesn't allow me to. Like, my motion is to end the search. So if we're not sure the community's on board, the search is over today. And so I have the twenty eighth, it's, well, we don't, we, well, let's not do this. The search starts over. So my intent is to end the search. And appoint Dr. McNeil to the position of superintendent at the next meeting because open meeting law says I, that's the way that my motion has to read. And um, I believe Mr. Rimbardo has already stated that she can't be appointed tonight. So. If there's uncertainty on her as the next superintendent. My motion is to end the search. So if we don't do it, we'd have to start the search over. So um, that's. So.
Trustee Cottle, I think you, you know, either you're misinterpreting what I'm saying or you're. Um, I I don't know, I've lost my train of thought there, but I. It is not about the confidence in her or, and I am fine with your motion to end the search. I'm just asking that that agenda item not come back in two weeks to give us just a little bit more time. To go out into the community so that they can feel like they have the opportunity to to have some public comment on that. If we were to have, move forward with the search process, we'd have interviews where people would come and make comment. We would have um, you know, the finalists candidates in the uh. A public forum and we are not providing that opportunity. I think by giving the public a little more time to get back to us, we're just. Maybe providing an alternative for them to feel engaged and feel like they had the, you know. The opportunity. I was not on the board when, at the time that trustee. Taylor was or Vice President Taylor, but I was running right afterwards and I can tell you, it is almost all that I heard about was. The public was not given enough opportunity to be part of that process and that's all I'm wanting right now. It has. Nothing to do with my confidence or my assurance, you know, feeling that she's the right candidate. It's just giving more time for community input.
I hear what you're saying. Um, what my comment was getting at is. The concern is the public needs more time to tell us what they think, but what if they come back with no? That's what I'm saying is like, the intent is to end the search. So if we think we need to give the public more time to tell us what they think. Because we aren't sure. I mean, once the search is over, it's either her or nobody. And then we have to start the search over again. That's what I'm saying. Like, my intent is to end the search and appoint her at the next meeting. If I wanted to wait till the twenty eighth or May. It would be to to fi- figure out, like my, the ten of my motion is that I believe the community is favoring her. Because I'm voting to end the search.
Okay.
So if, that's what I'm getting at. If if we decide in April twenty eighth or June or whatever, that. She's not the right person, the search has already been ended, the contract with JG Consulting is closed. We would have to start the search over again. That's what I'm saying. So my intent is to end the search and appoint her at the next available opportunity. If that's not the will of the board, then it would be the board's discretion to to reject my motion. And make an entirely different motion to try to get to where the majority of the board wants to get. So that's, that's the point I was trying to make.
Okay. I apologize for misunderstanding that. Um, I know both trustee Simon Holland and Vice President Taylor were, okay. Trustee Simon Holland, I'll let you go first.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, and thank you, Vice President Taylor. Um, I just uh want to share that. Um, trustee Cottle, if if the motion is to stop the search and bring it back on April fourteenth, I will not support that motion. I think it is in the district's best interest to stop the search and bring it back for appointment on April twenty. Eight. There's a few things that, uh, and I, like President Raymond, I was running uh right after that previous appointment was made and heard a lot about it. And one of the things, as Vice President Taylor has said, uh, that we heard a lot about was that the community didn't have an opportunity to be involved. If we waited until April eighth before that agenda item came back to us, we would have. If we waited until April 8th before that agenda item came back to us, we would have the opportunity to potentially, and we're talking about next steps in this process, to potentially allow Dr. McNeil to have a town hall, a virtual town hall, to be able to have community members hear from her directly and build some of that support or, or have their own opinions about what we should do, but be able to, for their, themselves, get a measure of what they feel. So, so I just, I would prefer that we, that the motion be to cancel the search and to bring it back for appointment on April 28th and consider some other steps in a process that might allow for more people in the community to have a, a more direct sense and understanding of her. Thank you.
And Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I was going to say, I guess something, something similar in this. This, first of all, you have no idea, to my colleagues, how much this is like a conversation I had many years ago. No idea. And one of those things, and the reason why I say that, is one of the things that we discussed was let's give this candidate, who at the time was interim superintendent Davis, an opportunity to have some town halls. Of course, they were going to be live, right? To be, to make some kind of contact and give, give the community a chance to weigh in and so on. So, it's just, it's just kind of crazy that that came back up. I actually had forgotten about that. Trustee Simon Holland, I would also say to, to, to the point, which I think is a valid point, that if we, what if we say, let's get some feedback and everybody comes back, no, which we, that's not going to happen. But I, I, I'm, I'm being sensitive to what trustee Cottle said. And then like, what, what do we do? And I think that, I think that's important. So, you know, what if we, what could we, and, and maybe this is where I need Chief General Counsel to weigh in, could we say we, we, we pause it till the 28th during that time? I mean, we can end it. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with ending it. I'm, I'm certainly, I'm fine with ending it. And then, and then maybe then during that time, interim superintendent McNeil has an opportunity to do whatever outreach and so on. And then on the 28th, we have various options for, in terms of ways for us to go if we get some feedback that's concerning to us or whatever. You know, I guess trying to speak to what trustee Cottle said. I do think it's important for us to get, I said, I didn't, I didn't stay in this conversation before and I regret that. And so, I need to stay in this conversation now. And if I lose, I lose. I've lost before. That I think it's important that we, that we are unreasonably reasonable when it comes to an opportunity for the, for the community to weigh in before we make a final decision. And if that means we pause the search until the 28th and then still have the option to, to appoint interim superintendent McNeil, should we get all the great feedback and so on? Or do we just stop it? And then if we get crazy feedback again, which none of us expect, we make decisions from there. I can go with the favor, with the pleasure of the board right now, but I just think that we would be, we would really make a big mistake by not allowing a greater opportunity for, for, for input. I mean, we see our parents at home trying to think, you know, when you teach kids your math, you, you carry the one. Well, you don't do that anymore. You know, and they're going to be finding that stuff out and that. I have talked to many people, as you, matter of fact, I got a friend of mine, what happened to carry the one? No, we don't, they don't do that. I mean, they're, they're, they're pretty stressed. They're pretty stressed. And so, I, I think it's important that we allow that opportunity.
So, the, from a legal perspective at this point, I, I, I guess you can try to tack on to trustee Cottle's motion or you could try to, try your own motion afterwards. But I, I think at this point, there's a motion on the floor and the motion needs to be voted on because you're, we're not, you're not getting anywhere. So, I think procedurally trustee Cottle hasn't accepted any friendly amendments. You could, you could make a motion to amend, vote on the motion to amend, and then that would tack on this language. Or you could just vote on his motion. If it passes, it passes. The chair is allowed to take other steps. You wouldn't be able to take a motion that would be inconsistent with his if it passed. But the gen item is written in a way that there could be multiple steps. So, I, I, I guess my advice is at this point in time, you should take a, a vote on this or somebody needs to make a motion to amend it because it, there's, it seems pretty clear to me that trustee Cottle is not taking friendly amendments, which is his right to do. I mean, that's procedurally how it works. So.
Can I get a second?
Go, yeah.
Did I get a second? I don't remember.
You, you did, but I'm going to make a motion to amend your motion. So, I don't know how to do this, but I would like to make a motion that amends trustee Cottle's motion in that it would not be April 12th, it would be the 28th. That we would come back and vote for, vote on Dr. Kristen McNeil's being put in. So, second that.
Just to clarify, it's April 14th, but you want to make a motion moving to the 28th?
Yes. And, and I'll second that. And that included keeping in place the canceling the search part of the motion, correct?
So, how it works is the only thing that you're voting on at this point in time is changing the date to the 28th. So, because it's a motion and a second, you have to vote on that amendment. If that amendment carries by the board, then trustee Cottle's motion as it existed becomes the following. It would become the searches over that on April 28th, you will consider appointing Dr. McNeil to the permanent superintendent position if the amendment carries.
And then Neil, a part of my motion as well was the public comment period. So, then if this motion passes, the public comment period would automatically be extended until the 28th?
Yes. Sorry, I forgot about that portion. My mistake. But you're right, you did have a public comment period on it.
Could I, could I ask the maker of that motion, could we include in the amended motion, direction to staff to, to explore other ways of public comment? You know, such as a town hall?
Yes. So moved if I can do that.
And I'll second that. So, the amended motion now is to change the date and to have staff explore other ways we could get more public comment on that potential appointment.
In order to assist staff, I can see Emily, I think she's going to have the same concern I have is you asked us to consider, do you just want a virtual town hall? I think a decision needs to be made considering something. We don't know what that means. So, if we don't do it, is that not good enough? The other thing is, is do you want public comment to be driven through the clerk, Ms. Batshelder again? And we could put something up on the website tomorrow that says, if you want to comment on this, here's how you can comment on it. So, I think more specificity or more guidance because at this point in time, and I see Emily nodding her head in affirmance, I'm not clear what is expected of, of staff. So, I don't mean to be argumentative, but if I, if we get it wrong, then we're going to come back on the 28th and be like, we got it wrong. And then we're going to be in May.
So, so let's just, let's just keep this motion pure and keep it about the 28th. And then we can have a separate discussion about what other public engagement might be part of it. Is that okay, Ellen? So, would, your motion would just be changing the date when this comes back to April 28th? And I would second that. Okay.
Okay. So, we had, I don't know how to, I guess we had a new, an, an emotion by trustee Minetto, a second by trustee Simon Holland. And I will ask our recording secretary, JJ, to do a roll call vote on that.
To, to be clear though, the only thing that the board is voting on right now is whether or not the amendment gets added to the previous motion. That's it. Okay. And I see everyone nodding their head, meaning all the trustees, understanding that.
Trustee Calvert. You're on mute, Jackie. We can't hear you.
Would you repeat the motion again, please?
The motion is an amendment to change the original motion from the 14th to the 28th.
And that we are stopping the search?
No, this is just the date.
You're right, you're right, you're right, you're right. Just the date. I'm sorry.
Trustee Calvert.
So, one more time, please, because I, please, one more time.
The, the motion is to amend the, to vote on the amendment to change the date from the 14th to the 28th.
And that includes in the search? No, just the 28th date. Okay. All right. I'm good.
So, was that it? Yay. That night? I think we still need a vote from you, trustee Calvert.
Oh, I'm good. Yay.
Okay.
Trustee Cottle.
No.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Aye.
Trustee Kelly.
Aye.
Trustee Minetto.
Aye.
Trustee Raymond.
Aye.
Trustee Taylor.
Aye.
Vote is six to one, motion passes. Now, we vote on the amended motion?
So, the motion before the committee, just to have the, or the board to have the record clear is that the search would end, that on the 28th, there would be the, an agenda item for the appointment of Dr. McNeil as the superintendent and a extended public comment period from the making of the motion until it's considered. So, I guess starting, we won't be able to get it up tonight, but starting tomorrow.
And so, does the existing motion and the seconder stand? Or do we start that process over again? Or do we just vote now on that?
You, you don't need to, no, that because you've amended it and the board voted on that amendment, that's now the motion. So, you don't need a new maker or new second. The maker still for the record is trustee Cottle and the second is trustee Minetto, even though that was amended.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll ask JJ to do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Calvert.
No.
Trustee Cottle.
Aye.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Aye.
Trustee Kelly.
Aye.
Trustee Minetto.
Aye.
Trustee Raymond.
Aye.
Trustee Taylor.
Aye.
Vote is six to one, motion passes.
Okay. So, this would be the time we could have more specific motions made surrounding next steps. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I, the one thing I've thought about in terms of those next steps is just being very, you know, aware and considerate for this, the stress that the staff is undergoing right now and, and trying to balance everything. I do, I know that it's been challenging and taxing, but I do feel that, that this is critical enough and that we, you know, want to try to make, you know, the opportunity available for people to be more involved. And so, I, I do like the idea of a virtual, something, town hall or, you know, I don't know what that exactly would look like, but I, you know, I, I don't see between now and April 28th, any lifting of gatherings. So, I think it would have to be virtual. And, but I think if we could, you know, we've been so creative about how to come up with these ways of moving forward with business. I, I would like to see something like that. And like I said, I, I do acknowledge the work staff's doing right now to just maintain everything, but I would, I'd hope we could come up with an easy way to get that information out there, just as an option. Are there any other thoughts, trustee Cottle?
Yeah. The concern I have with, with a forum is the implication that we're asking the public to interview her when as of right now, she's the only candidate. There are no other candidates. I get why we would do it, but I don't know why we would ask her to do that, especially with everything going on. And we don't have candidates anymore. Our intent is to gather the, the motion out. What we have now is we're gathering public feedback for a month and then making a decision up or down on the 28th. And if the decision's no, then we have no, we have nobody. So, by, a town hall will be implied to the public that we're asking them to interview her, which is going to be very confusing because we've ended the search. And I guess I, I don't want to get back into the conversation we just had. I'm just confused now on what the intent is over the next four weeks. So, I'll see you at that.
Okay. I think that's a fair point. I mean, I don't, I don't know that I was picturing it as an interview more as kind of what trustee Simon Holland was saying just right out, off the bat, that we just want to give people an opportunity to get to know her. And maybe it's more of a, you know, format where she can describe, you know, I, I think our staff certainly knows her. She's, has been around for a long time, but I think when you talk with others in the community, you know, it's one thing to say she's been here for 30 years, but to allow her the opportunity to describe what she's done in that time would be, I think, pretty meaningful for people to hear more about. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. And, and for me, again, it's about looking forward. We haven't had any opportunities for Dr. McNeil to really share her vision publicly for where the district might go and, and what the plans are for how we will get there, what her, what her ideas are for all of the things we care about. You know, increasing graduation rates and reducing remediation and improving grade level proficiency. And, and who knows with this coronavirus potentially changing the, the whole framework of how education operates. So, I would love to have her have the opportunity to have people understand what, what she sees and what she wants to have going forward because she hasn't had the opportunity to do that before. So, that would be, I think, really important for people to, you know, it's just like going to see a candidate speak. You know, you might be undecided about, gee, do I like this candidate or that candidate? And when you get to see them and hear them, it's important. I, I don't consider it an interview. I consider it a time for her to be able to share her thoughts and her dreams and her vision for the district.
Thank you. Trustee, or excuse me, Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I also think it's a time for her to learn directly, if you will, you know, what people are concerned about. I mean, it gives, it gives them a chance by, by sharing, by, by listening to her vision. And it is absolutely, in my opinion as well, as much, it's absolutely forward thinking, listening to her vision in particular areas and with how she sees about, what she sees about this and that. There, there certainly is an opportunity for her to learn from them as well, here are things that are important. And I think in the whole idea behind this is community input, right? It's, you know, community involvement for them to, for them to be able to, to get a feel for her and who she is because most, for the most part, they really haven't had a chance to do that. So, I think that's a valuable time for someone really looking to walk into such a, which is the, what to me is the, certainly the largest and to me, the most important, but I'm biased, CEO position in our, in our region. I, I think that's absolutely a fair thing, a, a good thing to do to allow the public and also to allow that for her. That's how I see it as well.
Thank you. Trustee Cottle.
Yeah. Those are both great points by trustee Taylor and trustee Simon Holland. The way. Yeah, those are both great points by trustee Taylor and trustee Simon Holland, the way I would review, the, the way you're setting it up, is that it's an inaugural address. That would be very appropriate after she's appointed, if it's before, it's going to be construed as an interview. She can't talk about what she's going to do going forward until she's appointed, or else it's an interview. It, if we set it up like it's an inaugural address, the inauguration comes after the election. Anything before the election is still trying to sway, get votes, and get confidence, and get the public's buy-in, and by ending the search, we, that, that's the intent that we have moving forward, she would be in a much better position to do that with our community after she's appointed as her inaugural, however she wants to do it, virtual address with the community and the media, so I agree with both of you, those are great things to do, but after she's appointed, because we've ended the search, it's going to be construed as an interview with the public if we, if we do it before.
Okay, trustee Simon Holland, and then trusting, or student representative Noble, and then vice president Taylor.
Thank you, madam president. I, I will just respectfully disagree, I think it's very, very typical to have an opportunity for somebody to be known personally, in a better way, and so I'm, I do want to hear from Nathan, but I'm prepared to make a motion, sorry, my dog is banging on the door. I, I'm prepared to make a motion when, when we're ready.
Okay. Student representative Noble?
Well, I really liked what Dr. Taylor said about getting out into the community and making those connections, doing that sort of thing. I agree with trustee Simon Holland, it is something that has been done before, but on a really personal level, and based on what I've talked to my peers about, when they got to hear Dr. McNeil speak and answer questions that they had when she came to our town hall, it really helped them have trust and confidence in her, that's really what this whole thing is about, trust and confidence in our new leader. And I think that's actually a really great idea, I think it would help a lot of prospective parents, students, and people who want to know what Dr. McNeil's going to do. On a personal level, I know it really, really put my mind, not terribly much, Morties, but only because I already know what Dr. McNeil has done. If I didn't, I would want to hear it, and so, I appreciate what you're saying, trustee Cottle, but I definitely would support a town hall before we make this decision.
I think, trustee Kelly?
Thank you, madam president, you know, most of the discussion has been on a town hall, but I thought that this was a discussion more about what types of public comment we were going to be receiving, so a town hall would be really great for Dr. McNeil to share her vision, and to talk, to answer questions, but I also want to make sure that we, that if a motion is made, that it also includes that we want to receive public comment, you know, through other channels, and I think it's important also to remember that not everybody, not everybody has access to internet computers, so we would also have to think about communities that maybe don't have that access, and can't, you know, join a digital forum to watch a town hall. We got to make sure that they also have an opportunity to talk about what they think, with us maybe appointing her as a permanent.
Thank you. I don't know, vice president Taylor, did you still have something to add, or?
No, I'm good, trustee Simon Holland basically said what I was going to say, so I'm good, and I got disconnected, but I'm back.
Okay. All right, well, I will turn it over to you, trustee Simon Holland, if you'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, madam president, I would move that between now and April 28th, we undertake a, a community engagement process around the potential appointment, permanent appointment of Dr. McNeil, that we convey the reasons why we have moved forward in this direction, and that we have a town, a virtual town hall accompanied by opportunities for people to give input who do not have internet access and, and can't access it that way. And I'll stop there.
Motion by trustee Simon Holland?
Second.
Second by trustee Kelly. JJ, if you would please do a roll call vote. If there's no further discussion, I should, I don't see any.
Trustee Calvert?
Yes.
Trustee Cottle?
No.
Trustee Simon Holland?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Trustee Minneto?
Aye.
Trustee Raymond?
Aye.
Trustee Taylor?
Aye.
Vote is six to one, motion passes.
All right, thank you for that work, and I guess I would then just ask Emily and Neil if you feel you have the information you need to move forward with next steps?
I, yeah, I mean, I, I, well, I, I don't know, it's rests on Emily's shoulders more than my team's, but I'm here to support whatever she needs, I don't know how, I guess we can use the US mail or whatever, I don't know how we're going to be able to have non-virtual meetings for those who can't get on a virtual site, I'm not suggesting that we should do that, I mean, that we should exclude those people, but we're also under a declaration by the governor to not have one in 10 people in the room. So I don't know how we do that, but if Emily can figure out a way, that, that's up to her, I, I can't, I mean, I've been trying to think of one, and I just got, somebody else just texted me that exact question, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think.
We're under a state of emergency.
I'm, I'm not quite sure how to make that happen right now either, I mean, I think we can put up a lot of information on our website, I think that we could ask our partners in the media to publicize the opportunity to gather feedback. I feel like I have enough information to think about it, but I don't have a lot of answers to offer in this moment.
Yeah.
I know you that chief communications officer Irene Payne is emailing me right now, and is telling me it's not possible that we should encourage people to email through the website. I, I just, I don't, but we can try to figure out a way to, I, I just don't know how we do it without doing it virtually, and still stick within the orders of the governor of the state.
I will, oh, sorry.
I see so many hands, I'm just going to say, I was not intending any public meeting with people, I think I was only picturing a virtual, and I, I was also hoping that we could use our media partners in some form, so that was my, and I'll start, I will start down the line, trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, madam president, that was the same point I was going to make, I think our media partners would be very eager to assist in in getting out whatever community engagement we need to do, so.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Emily.
I, I just have, I guess, a clarifying question that might maybe uncovered later in the conversation, but it, it sounds like we're trying to accomplish two things, right, gathering feedback, and I think that we can utilize our media partners to help us publicize the opportunity for feedback is one thing, but the virtual town hall, and having Dr. McNeil share her vision and all of that, I don't know how we could replicate that for the purposes of people who are at a digital disadvantage. So I feel like there's kind of two things we're trying to accomplish here, and I, on the virtual town hall side, I probably should have said this earlier, it didn't occur to me until just now, but I think we have a very targeted group of people that that will reach, but the other thing, kind of just plug for Dr. McNeil, is she's got a lot going on right now, and obviously, she's going to want to put her best foot forward in this process, but also attend to everything that we're dealing with right now, and so I guess I just need a little bit more clarity around the virtual town hall, and I mean, we can brainstorm a lot of ways to solicit comments, but I think there will still be people that are disconnected from that virtual town hall, and I want to make sure that I'm clear on what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. All right, vice president Taylor?
Thank you, madam president, I think that, you know, under, under the under the restrictions that we know we're in, honestly, all staff can do, all you can do is the best you can do. You utilize the media partners that we have, we set up the, the virtual town hall, we allow people to email comments in, are people that don't have a digital connection at a disadvantage, they really are. I mean, let's just be honest about that, yes, they are, but, but there, there's not, there's not a way around that, if we can find some creative ways, things to do, that's fantastic, but if not, just do the best that we can. I mean, that's, it's just like with public comment, we don't, we don't all hear the public comments out loud on the record, we're just doing the best that we can. And I think that's what we have to be okay with, is doing the best that we can, I don't think that, I don't, I don't think any of us as trustees expect you guys to just be up night and just up late midnight, three, four o'clock in the morning, trying to figure out how can we get to the person that doesn't have email. We may not be able to do that, I mean, if there's a way we can do some things, great, but if not, let's just do the best that we can. Let's not make this a, a pressure point and a whatever, and to me, that's the same for both of those things, that's the same for access to the virtual town hall, and it's also the same for being able to email in a comment, everyone who may want to did not have access to this meeting, too. We did the best that we could, and I think that's a fair expectation, and anything more than that would be unreasonable, I, I don't want, and now, I'm just one trustee, but I don't, I don't expect you to give people access that don't have it, I just expect you to do the best that you can.
Okay. Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, madam president, yeah, I, I think for staff, what, what the board is trying to say is just offer multiple ways for the community to be involved. And so, you know, it could be a town hall, email, putting up on, on our social media, involving, involving the media, reaching out to, you know, leaders that can then, on their own, with phone calls and stuff, reach deeper down into certain communities, just, just make it, make every, give everybody an opportunity to, to weigh in over the next month, I think is all what we're saying to do, so.
Trustee Simon Holland, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, president Raymond, I, I I know that the staff needs more clarity than do everything you can, so the motion was to have a virtual town hall meeting, to make best efforts to be inclusive, and use all of the methods that we currently use, mindful of the declaration of emergency, and the limitations that that puts on face-to-face meetings, and recognizing that, you know, we're not going to be able to reach every person in this, in this set of conditions. So again, expand the public comment period, use our typical means of public comment, and have a virtual town hall that would enable people to hear from Dr. McNeil, and to have potentially some questions answered, I, I think that's all we're saying, all we're trying to do, but as, to go back to Dr. Taylor's point, again, building, building trust and building confidence in her, so that she can have the best shot going forward.
I see we've been joined by our chief communications officer Irene Payne, I just want to quickly, I student representative Noble, you're, are you wanting to make a comment?
Oh, I didn't realize my hand was up, sorry about that, it's difficult to keep track, nice background, Irene, sorry, no, I bet.
All right, Irene, what?
For the record, Irene Payne, chief communications and community engagement officer, so I think trustee Simon Holland has just helped to give a little bit of clarity, and I would just mention that we're under some capacity issues as a staff, given what we're dealing with, with COVID-19, and also, our community is very preoccupied, no surprise there, with what is happening. So, we can do what we can do in terms of outreach, but when, and it's like trustee Raymond said, when our families and our community dealing with something that's unprecedented, it's hard for people to be engaged with a superintendent search. So, I don't know what level of response we'll be able to garner, we'll do our best with very thin resources at the moment.
Well, thank you for that input, you can stick around if you, I, I think, you know, the the goal for me is not to put any additional, I mean, I don't think any of us intend to put any additional stress or pressure on you on top of this, but but I hope you can understand where we're coming from and the weight of this decision, and the and our desire, I think, as vice president Taylor has said so clearly from the beginning, to really make this the best possible jumping off point for Dr. McNeil, and I, I absolutely you know, understand that this is an added thing right now, when we don't need added things. I, I think for me, part of the extension into April 28th is that, you know, I know we can't predict what the, you know, ebbs and flows of the news cycle are going to bring us, but you know, I think it does buy us a little more time to maybe get to a place where there's a little more breathing room for staff to, to spend a little time on that, you know, if we get the next directive that school is, you know, that there is another school closure, if, if that's the case, then that, you know, I know sets off a whole nother kind of cycle of preparations and, and getting up to speed, but, you know, I, I I guess there's no other answer than this is, this is very important, and I hope we can find a way, you know, to, to make some of this come together, and, and I think we've all expressed our understanding that this, we don't have an expectation of this being, you know, the full staff, full support, but I do think we have media partners that are going to have interest in this, and hopefully will help us share some of the news, too.
Yes, and I, I agree, and I appreciate those comments, I just, I just feel it's incumbent on me just so you know where staff's coming from in terms of resources, but as always, we will do our very best, and we'll reach out to the community, and we'll call on all of our partners to help us in this quest.
Thank you. I appreciate that, thank you, are there any other, while we have Irene and Tahiti in the background, it looks like.
I, I apologize, I actually thought I'd removed it, I, I've got a really boring blind behind me, and then Tahiti came up, so hey.
Do, do any trustees have questions, or any comments for our staff on this agenda item before I think we would be ready to move on, oh, vice president Taylor?
Just a, thank you, madam president, just a, a question, Irene, and this might show my age more than I want it to, frankly, could we send like a postcard out or something, and, and I know we have 64,000 students, so, or something like that, and say, if you want to have some comments, you can mail something back in, or you can go on the, on the, or you can email something, or, I mean, is that like a some kind of way to maybe reach, reach those people that may not have it, just something to think about, I, I don't even know all of what I'm saying when I say that, but because we have a month, maybe that allows us to put something in snail mail, and then they give you his address, you can know the email, and that way at least we can say we read, you know, just something to play with.
And we could certainly do that, and I, you know, you'd have to think about the budget in terms of where the money is coming from, and I can tell you, that's many, 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 many thousands of dollars.
I'm sure, like, because there's 64,000 of them, that's why I said a postcard, and not a letter, but yeah, I, I know, I know. not a letter. But yeah, I, I know, I know it's cheap, but.
It would be the whole community, wouldn't it? It would be, I mean, we wouldn't want to exclude anybody, so we would be looking at the whole community, which, you know, wouldn't we? No?
Uh, I was thinking more of families.
Okay.
In the district, and then others in the community would have to catch it on the news, and the other, all the other ways to put things out.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, President Raymond. I know we're really getting down some rabbit trails here, and I know, you know, we're trying to balance not being so directive to you that we're in the weeds, but giving you enough clarity, and also providing for the fact that we don't have a lot of staff. We're not, you know, people with a lot of time on their hands to do this. But I, I do want to remind, I think we have a motion on the floor about this, about the town hall, virtual town hall, the meeting, the motion that I made that we need to vote on. Did we ever vote on that?
Yeah, we.
Oh, it was, okay, all right. Sorry, I got distracted by my dog.
I was just trying to allow for the people to give more guidance, but if I, you know, I think we've done that, and I think unless there are other questions, Chief General Counsel Rombardo, did you have?
No, I, I think, I, I, I think at this point, the agenda needs to move forward, or you need to discuss a new topic. This item has been carried, and I, I think, you know, the board has definitely given input to staff.
Okay. Thank you all for the work on that. And so I think then, I don't know how to move forward with 5.3. And what, okay, trustee Simon Holland.
Thanks, President Raymond. It, it was my suggestion, and since we're canceling the search, it's really a moot point at this point. I would just tell my colleagues that, that process was invaluable to me in understanding strengths and areas where people can benefit from some professional development, and it benefited the candidates tremendously to have the feedback. So even though we're not going forward, it, it would have been great if we had multiple, you know, down to two finalists or something, but it also might be something that, that Dr. McNeil would benefit from, but she can talk about that later after we have other issues completed. So, you know, we can withdraw that. And Emily, thank you for the work that you did on it, but I don't think that it's, I think it's a moot point at this point.
So do we just, Chief General Counsel, do we need to make any formal, you know, removal of it from the agenda, or we just?
No, you can do so as the chair. So, and you put it on the agenda at the request of trustee Simon Holland, so she doesn't want it anymore. It's within your discretion.
Okay.
In the Board Policy Series 9000, and also in the open meeting, so you can just withdraw it.
Withdraw it, okay.
I'll text Dr. McNeil and ask her to come back if you'd like.
Thank you, yes, please. And then we'll just give her a minute before we move on to the item six on the agenda. Trustee Simon Holland, did you have a, a question?
No, I'm good, sorry.
I will take this time, so I don't have to say it again later, to remind everyone that if any general public, like, they can email, the address is J V A T C H E L D E R at washoschools.net. We will in a few moments be taking any final general comment, and so you still have a bit of time to email in any comments, and we will take a moment ourselves to read those, and, and read the names of the, the individuals that submitted that public comment on the record.
hsh.com.
I think I see.
Oh, there she is.
There.
Hello.
Welcome back.
I had some time to readjust my hair.
Well, we are on to agenda item six, and we'll start with 6.1, board reports. So I know we've all been consumed with this, and not out, obviously, doing much work with our schools or anything, but I'll just give you an opportunity each, if you have anything you'd like to make comment on. I'll start with trustee Minneto.
I just would like to say I'm so impressed with you, President Malina Raymond, with the things you've done, as well as our staff and our wonderful Dr. McNeil. I'm just, I'm thrilled that if we have to be going through this, we're doing it with you.
Oh, thank you. Trustee Calvert.
I just want to say I look forward to working with everyone through the year, and I do hope that we are, we're gonna get through this. So I just feel that, and you have been really great and awesome, and it's been a pleasure working with everyone. So I just want to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Trustee Simon Holland.
Ditto, pass.
Trustee Cato.
Hey, thanks to staff, print shop, bus drivers, teachers, for all the work we're doing during this difficult time, and we'll get through it. So thank you all very much.
Our student representative Noble.
Well, the only thing I'll say is this has been an interesting way to wrap up high school, but all the students, and myself included, appreciate all the work that all of you have done, especially interim superintendent McNeil and President Raymond, who have taken charge of the situation and led us to a place of stability amongst a time of great instability. It's invaluable to every student, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you all. It's me finishing off, pass.
Trustee Kelly and guest.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, just to echo what everybody else has said, just watching staff work during this time, you know, the, the bus drivers, you know, driving food out to the school sites, seeing the, the staff working with volunteers to pass out food, the print shop, just everybody that I've seen. I really appreciate all the work that they've done, and I'm glad that everybody is, is practicing social distancing. It's, I know it's tough, but everybody seems to be doing a really great job, and as a community, I think we've come together well. So, and yeah, kudos to you, President Raymond, for your leadership. I know when you became the president, you did not expect this COVID thing to come about, but I think you've handled it with, with grace, and it's been a lot of stability at the board level as well.
Thank you. Vice President Taylor.
All right, just ditto with the appreciation for the, the hardworking team at the district and your leadership, interim superintendent McNeil. I've told you several times, I thought you're doing an amazing job under, this is not kind of, kind of thing you learned in superintendent school. But you've just, you've just really shown yourself that it's really all about the students and the staff and getting through it. And the same to you, Vice President Raymond. Ta, who would have thought, this is your gift for your last, your last year on the board. That's what you get. But just, just to all the work that everybody's done. I've been posting things on my website, I mean, on my Facebook page, just trying to say thank you to so many people behind the scenes that are, that are getting it done. To the seniors that are out there, Nathan, and your colleagues, and your, your, your fellow seniors who are ending a, a year like never, ever before. I mean, it's, it's gotta be so difficult for you guys. Just know that we feel for you. We really do. We feel for you. There's not much we can do for you, but we do feel for you. So it's not as though it hasn't gone unnoticed that many, many seniors have missed proms, and senior seasons in athletics, and senior trips, and all those, just senior cut day, I mean, not that you cut, but you know what I mean. All those amazing things that make your senior year fantastic, and so we do feel for you. We really, really do. But we feel more for your lives, and this is the best thing that we can do to protect your lives. And to the families out there who've become unintentional homeschoolers, we feel for you too. We know that can't be easy, but thank you for your work. Thank you for your commitment. Hang in there. This, this staff at that district is doing everything they can to help you get through it. So this is, this, I'm sure, I am absolutely sure that this period we're going through is my proudest moment as a trustee for this school district. It really, really is. So thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next up is 6.2, the interim superintendent's report.
Well, thank you so much, and I couldn't have said it better myself, the amount of work and effort that this entire district has done. And to put it in context, you know, at our last board meeting, we had no idea what was before us, and the amount of work that our team has done. No, no, you know, there's no qualms working over spring break for the, for our team. And when I tell you that they have stayed up late nights, early mornings, and that's, that's the kind of world that we're in right now. There's, there's no guide rails as far as with virtual. And I just want to give a huge shout out to my leadership team. Obviously, you all as trustees have been so supportive in, you know, getting me questions and being kind of the eyes and ears out there, but I feel like the Academy Awards. There, there's just so, so many people to, to thank, our parents who have been patient and, and, you know, I was out at Sun Valley Elementary and Lois Allen Elementary with these phenomenal heroes that should have worn capes. They had masks on, but they were bus drivers, and by God, they handed packets to the parents and nutrition services who are preparing meals for thousands, thousands of children who have food insecurity. Just, just everybody has, has risen to be challenged, and I am, as the interim, I am just deeply, deeply touched. And my team knows that, I think I cry pretty much on every COVID team at the end of it, because they are just, everybody is just amazing. And Nathan, I hear you, buddy. You know, as a mom with a senior, I absolutely understand where you all are coming from. And, you know, I was talking to Ever June last night about what is this going to be when, when she comes back for her 10-year high school reunion, and her 20-year high, high school reunion. It's going to be very, very different, and your stories are gonna be very different. But know that we stand with you. We are here with you. And again, just thank you to everybody.
Malina, you're on mute.
Thank you, sorry. The next item on the agenda is any future agenda item requests? Are there any trustees? Okay. And then I will ask our, for 7.2, public comment, I will ask our recording secretary, JJ, do you have any public comment, general public comment for this agenda item?
Handle and skip.
Great. And we all received that during the meeting. If you, anyone has not had a chance to read it, we can take a minute while we close up here. All right. So the next meeting announcement, we're still discussing that. It is to be determined. We will obviously be having one on April 28th, but at this time, we're going to be looking at the COVID situation to determine the need for one on April 14th, and we will make that decision very soon, so we can get the word out to everyone. Does that cover that? Chief General Counsel Rombardo? Okay. We're good. Okay. All right. Well, then I will adjourn the meeting, and thank you all again for your patience, as we did a virtual for the first time. Good job, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Night.
See ya.
Good job, Malina.
Be safe.
Yeah, be safe, everybody.
Bye.